Good evening. At this time, I'm going to recognize Chris Noble, who is the pastor at Trinity Methodist Church in Bellhaven, to have prayer, and I ask that you remain seated.
Thank you Chairman Lawrence for the honor of being here. Let us pray. Gracious God, we're so thankful that we can still pray in the USA. We thank you, God, for the freedom you give us. We thank you, Lord, for these here before us who are willing to serve their community. We're thankful for the blessings of living in this county and all the many resources you have provided for us. Lord, we're thankful that you ordained all authorities and governments. We ask that you bless these here as they make decisions on our behalf. Each of these is here because you allowed them, Lord. You invited them and you opened the door for them. So we ask you to grant them wisdom and grace that they might consider the business of the community ahead of any other desires or wants. Search their hearts, Lord, that there might be a blessing to the people here in Beaufort County and that you might be glorified. We ask you to let tonight's meeting be blessed, that they might make much productive work and have good decisions and that you might be glorified. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Chris. At this time, I'll call our February meeting to order.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
You need to look at your...
I've got to, yes.
It's the next item. Next item. So at this time, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask Commissioner Booth to lead that.
(Inaudible) America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you will make sure that you turn your phone off. We're down to conflict of interest disclosure. Is there a commissioner that needs to disclose a conflict? Here is none. We move to the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Have a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. We're down to items for presentation. The first one is the Service Award Presentation. Dolores.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have one employee with Beaufort County I'd like to acknowledge tonight, but he could not be here. That would be Mr. Alan Cox, who now has five years in with the Emergency Medical Services Department.
Thank you very much, Dolores.
Thank you.
Express our appreciation. We're down to the Trium Annual Report. Dave, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Is the presentation on here?
You're up.
It's up. Let me see. I'm not finding it here. Sorry about that. It is not coming up. What's that? Okay. Oh, thank you. All right. So, thank you for having me this evening. As you know, I come out every year. This is my ninth year out here. I first want to thank Commissioner Langley, who's been chairing our Regional Advisory Board and just recently got nominated by the Central Regional Advisory Board up to our Governing Board. And so, I do really appreciate you volunteering for that, so that's going to be helpful. And so, I'll go through this report, and if there's any questions throughout or after, please feel free to ask. So, next slide. We are transforming lives and building community well-being through partnership and proven solutions. I'll talk a little bit about who we are, some Medicaid huge transformation changes, which then impact our organization as a whole, and then some county data at the very end. So, in our numbers, we cover 28 counties. We just recently added Halifax County and Bladen Counties this past year. So, our total population in those 28 counties is about 1.5 million folks. And as you know, we are a managed care organization that basically contracts out to provider agencies that serve people with mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use. Okay? And we served last year about 4,600. And I think I've started telling you in 2018, with this Medicaid transformation, we will be serving less folks, and so last year, we served about 58,000. And so this year, it's down to about 46,000. Seventy percent of those folks have a primary diagnosis of mental health. Twenty percent have a primary diagnosis of substance use, and about 10% have a diagnosis of intellectual and developmental disabilities. We contract out with about 550 companies throughout our 28 counties to serve those with behavioral health and IDD. Our budget is about $520 million, almost $521 million. We serve the smallest county in the state, Terrell County, and our largest county that we serve is New Hanover, and we cover over 13,000 miles in those 28 counties. This is just a map to kind of give you an idea of what our regions look like. I'm over the, both the northern and southern, but I primarily cover the central region. And so, it goes from Nash County all the way out to Dare County, including Beaufort. But in the northern region, it's 11 counties, and the total population is about 250,000 people. You see, in the central region, we have two less counties, but we're almost twice the size in numbers. But if you go to the southern region, there are eight counties total, and their total population is almost 800,000. So it really ranges in size in regards to the counties. So, next slide. So, as I was saying, since 2018, the state has moved a lot of our population over to what's called the standard plans, and those are those five insurance companies up there. And AmeriHealth, Blue Cross, United, WellCare, and Carolina Complete Health. We used to cover every individual for Medicaid that was mild, moderate, and severe. Now, these private insurance companies cover the mild, moderate, and mild and moderate individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, substance use, and mental health. Okay? They started on July 1 of last year, or 2021. We are, we have been required by the state contract to partner with one of those five, and we have partnered with Carolina Complete Health in helping us manage the physical health. We've never managed the physical health before. We've only managed those three disability groups. So now, with someone with mental health and COPD, we have to manage the COPD also. Okay? Next slide. So, we are up to, we have six LME MCOs that have been around a long time. There used to be 41 of us. Okay? The state has continued to try to right-size the number of administrative dollars going out, and so we're down to six now. We will be continuing to serve the severe mental health, substance use, and IDP population. The original date for us to go live was July 1 of last year. Then they moved it to December 1, and now they have moved it to April 1, which is similar to what they did with the private insurance companies also, to try to get the infrastructure ready for that. But we did have a soft launch on December 1 for care management. Next slide. So, this is the map of the tailored plans, which Trillium is one of those, and you'll see on Far East, we cover the whole east part of North Carolina. And so, adding Halifax in there, which was nice because we had Nash, so now they're connected to that, but also adding Bladen in this past year. Next slide. So, like I said, December 1, we began care management for folks. The big difference is our care managers now need to learn not only how to manage someone with mental health issues, but also with physical health issues, dealing with the whole person. Okay? We are also required by the state to contract with every single pharmacy in all 28 counties because they do medication for all of our folks on Medicaid. So, your pharmacy, we have a contract we have to have with them, every pharmacy out there. We're also required to contract with every primary care office that serves Medicaid individuals. So that's a, that's a big lift on our side also, making sure we're getting those contracts. So some of the organizational changes, system of care staff have been moved over to care management because care management is one of our biggest lifts. So those folks have been moved over. I was fortunate enough, we do have some community liaison coordinators that are under me, which are helping me stay connected with the counties. Care management also includes population health, which deals with all sorts of physical health pieces. Like I said, we're contracting with Carolina Complete Health, and they are working with our hospitals and local health departments to make sure we're covering folks in that aspect. We do have a link on our website with a lot of Q and A's on the, going live for the transformation. Some of the org changes include pharmacies. So we've had only one call line, but the state's requiring us to set up another call line just for pharmacies now, and another call line just for providers, and another call line just for nurses, and then a regular member recipient call line. Okay? So, our call center has had to get bigger according to the contract that the state has on us. Care management, like I said, is getting much bigger, dealing with the whole person, dealing with care management teams. We now have an emergency department disposition team because we don't want folks to stay in the emergency room. It's very hard to get them out into services, though, but we have a team that's working daily to try to get those folks out. We have a Department of Juvenile Justice Care Management Team and a Rapid Access Care Coordination Process that meets on a regular basis to see who's in the hospital and how we can get them out. Some of our projects, we have money from the state that was settled by the feds for the opioid settlement. We got some of that money, and we have done one request for proposals. There's another second one out there right now that ends, the end of February, for anybody to apply to get additional opioid settlement funds. We also continue to distribute Narcan kits. In about two months, I should be getting some more to get out to the communities. Usually, I go through the county manager to see where those Narcan kits need to go. I've been starting to work on a tribal engagement strategy because they are now a requirement to be working with in the tailored plan, and so, working with the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians and the other tribes in our region, and there's seven of them in our 28 counties. We have started a co-responder pilot, and about two weeks ago, I did meet with the sheriff on, on that, and so, talking a little bit about how we can help support law enforcement in responding to folks with mental health in the community. They're in just a couple of counties right now, but I guess what the Greenville PD has been talking about, because they've been doing it the longest, they're, they think it's an, it's an excellent program, and we're willing to try to help support that. For our Consumer Family Advisory Committee, we did add one, we've been, for years, serving mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use. The state is asking us to add traumatic brain injury into that fourth category. So we're really recruiting individuals that have family members or themselves with traumatic brain injury so that we can get their input on how to best serve them. And we will be inviting Commissioner and all of our board members and our Consumer Family Adviser to ribbon cutting that should be taking place in May. Many of you may have heard the 200-bed facility that was, that's opening up February 1 in New Hanover County. 100 beds for women, 100 beds for men that deal with substance abuse issues. And there's a exact same program, a similar program in Raleigh, and we're, that's the only one east of Raleigh. So, and it's an excellent program. I've taken folks just to see how they do their meetings there. It's phenomenal. So, you all probably already know about this, for the Healing Opportunities, Healthy Opportunities Pilot, Beaufort County is one of the counties that the state awarded this to be covered by, and Access East is the one that covers Halifax, North Hampton, Hurtford, Bertie, Martin Pitt, and Beaufort. And basically, they're looking at the social determinants of health and around housing, food, toxic stress, transportation, and those sort of things, and how they, and it's a, it's a huge grant that the state got from the feds. Someone may know a little bit more about it, but it's about $600 million in that, in that grant for a couple of years. So, we're really excited to make sure that Beaufort County gets covered in that. Last slide. Every year, I give you the numbers of people served. So last year, 2,065 individuals were served in Beaufort County, 1,548 with a primary diagnosis of mental health, 563 with a substance use diagnosis, and 249 with an intellectual and developmental disabilities diagnosis. And I always say, these numbers do not add up to the 2,065 because some of these folks are duly diagnosed. So, thank you again for having me here tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any, any questions by the commissioners?
I have one.
Yes.
Hey, what counties are the tribes located in? I'm just very curious.
So, we have...
Besides maybe Bladen and...
Bladen and Columbus, but also Halifax and Warren have some. And then the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians is just in the western part of the state, but they cover about three counties out there too. So...
You got that county, those counties?
No, we don't, but we're required to have a contract with the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, so I'm actually going out there Thursday to meet with them on that, so try to get that contract nailed down.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any, anyone else? Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you.
The next item is a presentation by Captain Russell Davenport with their Sheriff's Office, and he's going to be talking about drug awareness. Welcome, Russell.
Thank you all. Good evening. It's good to see everybody here. I appreciate the invite. Before I get started, I understand they have 10 minutes. 10 minutes will only scratch the surface of drug awareness. So, before I get started, I want to invite every commissioner and anybody in this room who wants a presentation on drug awareness, drug dangers, I'll do it in a closed session or I'll meet with you anytime, but 10 minutes will only scratch the surface.
Mr. Chairman, without objection, can we extend that to 10 minutes?
We, we'll see how it goes. Well, I wanted to know if you'd start to engage how he presents his... We'll, we'll give you up to 20 minutes if you need it.
Yes, sir. I'll take all the time that you give me. Well, first of all, let me say one thing. There's not a person in this room, not one person, that raised their children to use drugs. I used to say that, Stan. It's changed. Now, the parents are teaching their kids to use drugs. I've seen it in my career. So that being said, how does it happen? Is anybody in there?
Side to influences.
And, and when does it happen? And when do they get the drugs? Right?
Once they got away from you.
Until they get educated by drug officers like me. I'm holding drugs in my hand. And if I ask you, can I approach you? Because I want to show this to you. This looks like it won't go, right? It's not. There's enough drugs in here, senior president. It is fake. I want you to pass it around, Commissioner. This is what we're dealing with. I don't want to go too far on television, because something, we're hot. The youth, the youth knows this, guys. The youth knows it. The parents, teachers, DSS, health department, I've taught some of these peoples, I've taught church groups. Parents don't want to know where the kids are hiding drugs. This is it. It's not a ball of water. Who wants any more?
I'm afraid that's not a federal.
None of these drugs are real. They're for paying purposes only. It's all fake. I don't really like to see it. I kind of want to know what's going on with the drugs. Like I said, 10 minutes don't even get us started. You know, I missed this. When I say missed it, I was called to a school service, and I know about everyone in the contingent, you know. I didn't know about that one. Axe and spray. Axe and spray. A twist, pops, craze. But guess what? That's another hidden thing. Because there's not a kid that's going to lay their drugs in front of the parents. Of course, majority, let's just say majority, the majority of the parents didn't raise them that way. So I say it can be true, my kids not on drugs. I bought this today from the store here in Beaufort County. So they sell these things every day. Yes, sir.
You bought that?
Yes, sir.
You buy all of them?
Buy all of them.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You remember the paraphernalia law some years ago?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't that kind of exist as paraphernalia?
It would, but they sell it as a safe to hide your jewelry or your valuables. Then they don't have to use it for drug paraphernalia. It's a way to beat the system. What I want to do is I want to pass out to you commissioners. Two more, is that right?
Yes.
Absolutely right, Stan. It's all fentanyl. Purchased, seized, and bought here in Beaufort County. That is Beaufort County drugs, Beaufort County cases that we met every day. I checked today, we're 46 cases just of drug use. That's averaging more than one case a day, and we work five days a week. They're all felony drug cases. What you see, fentanyl pills, powdered fentanyl. Since January 1, we had 18 reported overdosees. 18. That's just reported. The guy was talking about Narcan. The people that get Narcan, they bring their own self back and don't report it. But these are the ones that are just reported to us that we respond to. 18. So a much dangerous thing going on right now, of course, is fentanyl. And everybody says, well, how do they get it in? How is it here? Same way we've always been getting it in. You know, it's coming in from cartels. I can't give you details, but do we arrest cartel members or do we get drugs that come in from cartels? Absolutely. Every day, that's how it gets here. Another thing, the fentanyl, soul, powder, candy. I want to pass out this package. I want y'all to look at it. It's an empty package. Most of all, I went to the same store, a different store today, not today, yesterday. And you can even look, it's got nutrition facts and the contents that's supposed to be in the bag. Pass them around. With the legalization of marijuana on the rise, that's what we're getting. Is anything in those bags? None. They sell empty bags. Those bags are empty, $3, $4 at that mall to put their own drugs in.
Question. Do you consider marijuana a gateway drug?
Absolutely.
Do you think it should be legalized for, for recreational use?
Well, you know, I'm biased. I've been doing drug work since 1997, but there's not a person I haven't arrested that starts smoking marijuana or started selling marijuana when they're selling drugs.
Thank you very much.
But I will show you something before, before I end with your question. But that's what we're dealing with. So my parent looks at one of those bags and says, oh, they bought this from the store. It's even got ingredients on it. None. Those bags haven't been packaged yet or sealed. So that's what we're dealing with, and putting everything in those things, gummies with fentanyl, fentanyl pills, marijuana, not, not hemp, not CBD, but marijuana in those So this is just some of the things that we get started on. Stan, I think you asked a great question. And I had a school that was concerned about every kid, not every kid, a majority of the kids in school walking around with fake pens. So they want a presentation from me, wanting to know why they were using fake pens. I said, it's pretty obvious when you carry it out around in school. About all. I mean, if you're in the school, when you carry it out around, now you're smoking marijuana. But you put THC wax in that and smoke it all day long, then it teaches you don't know about your smoking.
Has no butter?
Butter, unless you're extremely close because it's vaporized.
Oh, wow.
Now, like I said, at a later time, a more time, you know what that's used for? In large room, man. This is a can, this is a can of butane, a lot of butane. Probably nobody in this room knows because y'all don't do what I do all the time.
I do, I've seen you.
The sheriff made me wear a shoe for my bike. I don't wear a shoe for my bike down the street. But y'all know what it's for?
Crack. Crack cocaine.
Concentrating marijuana.
So, this one can can turn marijuana into marijuana wax. This one can. Extremely explosive, dangerous process, houses have exploded, but this is what's going on. So if you legalize marijuana, I mean, it's, it's not up to me, I'm just telling you what I know. If you legalize marijuana, this is what happens. Everybody says, well, marijuana's a plant, or cocaine's a plant, heroin's a plant. When you start the extraction process to get the drugs out of it, which is a THC, THC hydrocannabinol, that's what gives you high. So you're talking a marijuana plant. I mean, I was actually in a church group, and I asked church group, and they're really honest, I haven't smoked marijuana back in the 70's days. I have them, raise your hand. I have them. And I said, you know what? If we had that marijuana you had back then, even coming 2% to 3% THC, we'd be fine. But now we're growing, we're 30 to 35% THC. Then you subtract, or you take this and you extract the THC from it, then you're 89% THC. It gives you high, then you will pass out when you're behind the wheel of a car.
Did you say that was wax or you could make wax?
You make wax with that. And I will not show you how to do this on TV. This is one of these processes where I'll have a closed session, and I can show you that a hood's been there. and I can show you, a hood's been there, hood's seen me do this before. But I can take this one can and I can produce marijuana wax.
I've never used marijuana wax. I'm getting too damn old.
But this is what, seriously, this is what the parents, the communities, the leaders need to know. Because some people think, oh, marijuana's okay. Not the case. Not if you do what I do for a living and you start seeing what's going on. Of course, there's a big push for legalization. It may happen. But look at the dangers that we're going to present to ourselves.
Marijuana is a perfect delivery system for fentanyl.
Yes, it is. There's been others, counties, not us, that's gotten pens with laced with fentanyl. I will tell you that the drugs that we're buying off the street, whether it's meth or cocaine, when we send it to the lab and it comes back, it has fentanyl in it. Sounds like every drug that we get now is cut with fentanyl. You know, you're buying stuff off the street, you don't know what you're getting. I don't know how long I've talked. I know I get overwhelmed when I start talking.
Nine minutes and thirty-five seconds.
Nine minutes, thirty-five seconds. I don't know, ten, ten minutes more.
Please keep going.
I would invite anybody, because I could talk nights about and hours about the dangers that we see. You know, recently, we have some good judges that we explain to them the dangers about fentanyl and they give us high bonds, which we need. Because it's a dangerous drug. They don't need to be out there putting poison on the street when they have, selling fentanyl. So that has been happening. We reached out to some of the judges because we were concerned that they were getting low bonds. When we started talking about fentanyl, then they understood the dangers and we've got some of the bonds up. Try to protect citizens, so.
Jared? So you're more or less an advocate for having bonds appropriate to the charges?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You know, Commissioner Langley was a probation officer for years. You know, when we arrest somebody that's on probation, on parole, they've already violated the judge's order, judge's sentence, and they go in front of the magistrate and get a slap on the wrist and get everybody back out. I mean, times have changed.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes. You stated that drugs is coming in here from cartel.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate the job that y'all do. But the question that I have, the drugs has gotten here when you get, when you get little boy. What happened to the big guy that brought them in here to start with? The guys with the buses, the planes, the trains? What happened to them? I was looking up other day, I forgot what county it was. They confiscated about three million dollars worth of drugs. In my county, where I live at, we confiscate about thirty-five little boys.
That's right.
Why can't we get some of those big boys that's bringing it here?
Well, you know what, Mr. Booth, I can. I can have ten kilos delivered to that door out there tonight. But why? Those ten kilos won't destined for Beaufort County. You stop. I can call today and order thirty more kilos. It's going to come from another state. And it's going to get delivered to Beaufort County. I'm going to do a big old press release saying, hey, we took off ten kilos. Oh, yeah, good job. Well, they weren't destined for Beaufort County. I wanted an informant undercover to get over the guy in Texas to bring me ten kilos. They're going to send me a mule. Now, I'm going to arrest that mule for the ten kilos. So the difference is, in the past couple of years, we've concentrated on Beaufort County. Not bringing drugs into Beaufort County, but taking drugs out of Beaufort County. And I think the message has been sent probably clear to most of the drug dealers in Beaufort County. Now, if, if the commissioners want to see large drug arrests, we do them all the time. Some of them are not published. You got one picture there of a hundred and sixty grams of fentanyl seized by the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office Drug. That was destined for here. Another fentanyl to kill everybody in Beaufort County. Another. So the question is, why don't you see that? Number one, we quit calling other states or other areas to bring us loads of drugs to make ourselves look good. If I know that in ten kilos around the state, let those officers get that dope in their state or their county? Why bring it to Beaufort County? Why get the mule? Get the person that's using, or the person in charge of it. That's all we're getting is a mule. The man himself ain't riding with ten kilos. It ain't happening. Absolutely.
Well, I think I heard you explain this for the people that don't know a little bit different from what you just did. And that is, the middleman has been cut out of the drug business. The mules are what they're using. That means the big guys in Texas or Mexico are somewhere else. The people that are coming into this country who are illegal are delivering, for the most part, this stuff. So the, the whole market for drugs has changed radically from what it was. And we need a whole new approach to drugs.
I can't give details of drug investigations, Mr. Booth, but we all work in a cartel. And I refuse to call an order ten kilos from that cartel. We pass that information on. We got the guy in Beaufort County with a large amount of drugs. A lot. They know who the cartel member is. But I can't go to Mexico and arrest him. Just can't do it. Now, if we want to talk about the biggest drug carrier or big drug supplier is, is the US Mail or FedEx. Not many people riding with it anymore. It's all mail in.
Well, Russell, we thank you very much for your presentation. And I guess, I guess if a group wants, wants you to come.
Anybody that wants to contact me, that can contact me, Sheriff's Office, on the main church group. I do not like to educate children because they don't know what I know. I mean, they really do. They're smart, they're not stupid. They know more about this stuff than we know. I know it because I work the street with my guys every day and we see it, so we know what's going on. I have the night, the parents or people that's got children, know what to look for. And that's what I want. I want them to know what to look for. But the majority of them say, no, my kids are using drugs. I searched their room and I can't find it.
I have a question. Short question, might be a longer answer. You have association with other state agencies that do pretty much what you do.
Yes, sir.
My question is, over the last year, two years, have you seen a greater influx of fentanyl coming into the United States?
Not only fentanyl, every drug. For the past couple of years, drugs went up. Many years ago, it was hard to get drugs. Price of cocaine, the price of all the drugs went up. Now the prices of drugs are down and the drugs are plentiful. You can get anything you want.
How, can you give me an estimate of how much more you're seeing over the last two years? And not just you, but the people you talk to. I know y'all talk amongst yourselves.
Yeah, we see it all, but I would say the fentanyl within meth is at least a two to three hundred percent increase. I mean, we're.
Thank you, Russell.
And our records show that. I mean, you know, our fentanyl arrests, our fentanyl pills, you know, and our meth is the same. And I, I think, don't get me wrong, cocaine is still there, okay? But we're concentrating on what the public is seeing. We're concentrating on all the overdose that people die from or, or don't die, but the families are concerned. So we're after those people that's putting that most dangerous drug on the street. But we still make cocaine arrests, Molly, MDMA, XC. We still make all those arrests, but it seems like the fentanyl is the highest that we see.
Commissioner Richardson?
Well, let me, let me give Russell a big plug along with the sheriff here on this program. Russell and his team came to the Board of Health, with which I'm a member several months ago. And they gave us quite a program. That's where I first saw this. So if you have a church, a civic organization, you will be astounded at the program that he can give you, not in front of television where all the kids can see it, but about what's really going on with this. You should invite him. You deserve to know what's going on with this. And they did, they do a great program. It's really worthwhile. Just don't have it on the night the kids are there.
Once again, thank you very much and thank each one of the, the, our sheriff and all the other ones that are involved for, for doing an excellent job.
Hey, Chairman, we're having and hosting a town hall meetings throughout all of Beaufort County. One each month throughout. And the presentation will continue in each of those town hall meetings to conduct the sheriff's office on the community for these legal updates or law change updates in exchange of information. So we invite you to host it on our Facebook. I have a Roar's motion, the first one, like March twenty-third. If you'll put that on your calendar and watch our schedule. Thank you, sir.
You said March the twenty-third? And the location?
At the community center in the corner. Just behind the sheriff's substation.
Katie, do you? Okay, I think, is Dave still in here? I, I think Dave must have picked up the speakers for the public comment section. So who went, who wants to go first that had signed up on the list? Because we don't have it, it's gone. Unless, unless one of our audience has the list.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Beaufort County, the Washington Daily News printed this article. There is an organization going around the state of North Carolina attempting to limit prayer in public meetings. The First Amendment of United States Constitution protects the rights of faith and religious liberty and the free exercise thereof. My rights do not begin where your, do not end where your feelings begin. The history of our country well documents Christian beliefs in the fact that this country was established based on Judeo-Christian values. If you have any questions about that, I have some books that you should read. The Founding Fathers' speeches and quotes. If my people, the Federalist Papers, if you have two months to read and nothing else to do, and for light reading, faith still moves mountains. Proof that our country believes in God above and the free exercise of religious beliefs. As early as sixteen sixty-eight, early governments, the Virginia House of Burgesses, to be specific, requested that the people participate in Days of fasting and prayer. Seventeen seventy-four, a day of fasting and prayer is called, May twenty-fourth, seventeen fourteen, on and on and on. January twenty-seventh, nineteen eighty-three, a national day of prayer. May eleventh, nineteen seventy-eight, a day of prayer during World War One. June sixth, nineteen forty-four, during World War Two, a day of prayer. After the attack of September eleventh, two thousand and one, President Bush called for multiple days of prayer and after Hurricane Katrina. During the Constitutional Convention, Benjamin Franklin called for prayer daily to open meetings and discussions so that God's favor would direct the establishment of the United States of America. There is no such clause as separation of church and state. The clause states establishment of religion. I will be happy to school you on what that means. It was, there are many diverse faiths in Beaufort County and the state of North Carolina. These faiths should be respected. Each person has the right to establish and believe his own beliefs. Commissioner Langley is a pastor. He pastors his flock. He doesn't leave his cloak at the door when he walks in this room and he doesn't pick it back up when he leaves. The Constitution guarantees the right that he may exercise his faith in his religious beliefs. Recently, there have been numerous cases where the Supreme Court ruled in the favor of religious liberty.
Three minutes.
I will be happy to discuss further events that the Supreme Court has ruled on recently. I ask the Beaufort County Commissioners to stand by your faith and continue to have prayer in your meetings.
Thank you. The next person? And if you will, identify yourself. I'm sorry.
He didn't turn his phone off.
It's, it's, it's the timer part. And I'm mashing all these buttons and it won't do anything.
My name is Sherry Tyson. I was made aware of this. I don't, I don't get the newspaper. I don't subscribe to the newspaper here in Beaufort County. But I was made aware of this today. But I'm very concerned about the prayer not being said in the opening of the meetings. This is from Ann Graham. For years, we've been telling God to get out of our schools, to get out of our government, to get out of our lives. And being the gentleman he is, I believe he has calmly backed out. How can we expect God to give us his blessing and his protection if we demand he leave us alone? Ann Graham. We, the people of this great nation and community of Beaufort County, demand prayer be kept in the opening of this board, these board meetings. We have taken God out of everything we do and look at the nation, and look at the nation we live in now. We sit back idly and do nothing. And until we take a stand, we will continue in a downward spiral of destruction. It doesn't start in Washington DC. It starts in our own backyard churches and community. Don't sit back and let some anonymous coward dictate his or her demand to take prayer out of these meetings. I pray this board of commissioners continue with inviting our Lord into these meetings for guidance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dawn Sland. Tonight, the Beaufort County Commissioners will address a complaint. The complaint addresses concerns of an individual claim that members of the board are in violation of the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment by having a prayer led by a member of the board at the beginning of their meetings. Americans united for separation of church and state seek to halt these prayers alleging the board is violating the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment by opening its meetings with a Christian prayer led by a member of the board. The Establishment Clause in the First Amendment prohibits the government from establishing a religion. The precise definition of establishment was historically meant in prohibiting state government-sponsored churches, such as the Church of England, during the time that our country was fighting for independence from persecution of that very entity. In our county meetings, these indications serve to bring solemnity to the proceedings. To these complaints and other similar complaints worded closely, local boards have been given notice and have changed their Christian invocations by board members into offering a moment of silence to pray to whatever God or religion they serve to be compliant. I'm asking the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners for unanimous vote against offering this moment of silence. As we have seen tonight, Beaufort County will not be in violation of the Establishment Clause if the invocation is given by either a citizen or local clergy that volunteers to pray. Beaufort County Board of Commissioners only need to establish a resolution to do so. If we choose to be silenced and ask God to step aside, we cannot be surprised when he does exactly that. Thank you.
Thank you. Had anyone else signed up? Okay, if, if not, we'll move to the legislative updates. And we are happy to have with us tonight Representative Keith Kidwell. And I know you're busy and I got to be in Raleigh first thing in the morning, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I'll be leaving for Raleigh pretty quickly after the meeting this evening. So I appreciate your time, Commissioners and staff for what you do here and citizens for coming out and showing interest in what you do and the way this government works. I am going to address some legislative issues after I follow, which I had no idea that some of our citizens would be here today speaking on this. And that is the freedom of religion. of religion. I'm going to read to you the Constitution of the United States as it pertains to such. "Congress shall make no law that establishes, for the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right to people to peaceably assemble, petition the government for redress and grievances." The Constitution, according to John Adams, "Our Constitution was made for, only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate for the government of any other." I think Mr. Adams knew what he was speaking of, seeing that he was there when these documents were written. North Carolina Constitution, Article 1, Section 13 on Religious Liberty. "All persons have a natural and inalienable right to worship Almighty God and according to the dictates of their own conscience, and no human authority," no human authority, gentlemen, "shall in any case whatever control or interfere with the rights of conscience." It's pretty clear. A letter from the Danbury Baptist to Thomas Jefferson, where Thomas Jefferson responded to said letter, they quote the wall of separation between church and state. Never has anything in this country's history been taken more out of context than that quote. Gentlemen, the letter from the Danbury Baptist Ministers, I have it here, but I'll not read the entire thing, it's rather lengthy, was a complaint to then-President Thomas Jefferson that he was afraid, the Danbury Baptist Ministers were afraid, that the government was going to enter and try to control their church. Thomas Jefferson's response was, they can't do that. There is a wall of separation that keeps them out. It was never intended, nor in that letter, nor in practice, to keep religious out of government. It was intended to keep the government out of our religion. Further points. December 4th, 1800, Congress approved the use of the Capitol for church services by Thomas Jefferson. They used the Capitol Rotunda for church services for over 50 years. The Marine Corps Band played at said services. There were four different churches in the same day that would use the Capitol Rotunda for church services. It was attended by most of Congress and virtually all of the Presidents who sat during that time. Very interesting if you actually dig into it. The Aitken Bible, many of you have probably never heard of it. It was actually, I brought an attachment, anybody who cares to look at it, it was actually a Bible written by a gentleman that Congress authorized, approved, and put their seal on it. And said that that Bible should be read by all of the citizens and students of the United States of America. It was the first fully English Bible printed in the United States, and it was endorsed by Congress. Ladies and gentlemen, when somebody will tell you there is a wall of separation between church and state, I would argue they're uneducated in matters of Constitution and religion. Now, as your representative, the religion, whether it's secularism, which is a religion, that religion believes that man is the supreme being, there is no God. Atheism, which is virtually the same thing, again, no God. But here's the thing, I don't care if you're secular, atheist, Jewish, Buddhist, Islam, Catholic, Methodist, you have the right to exercise your religion under the United States Constitution and the Constitution of the great state of North Carolina. Practice whichever you choose. I personally would gladly fight for your right to do so. I don't care which one it is. But, I do want to remind people, this is the United States of America, where we have the freedom of religion, not the freedom from religion. I ask you gentlemen, when you consider this situation that's coming before you, that you keep that in mind. Let me now go to more legislative issues. Not that that's not a legislative issue, because we happen to pray in the legislature every time we open. Today, you're going to hear from, I believe, Cliff Williams, the Mayor of Aurora, on a project that's happening down in Aurora that's going to bring some jobs to Beaufort County. I think he's going to ask for your assistance. I want to point out that the state has helped very handily in, in the project down in Aurora to bring in the industrial park and the college annex building down there. We're encouraged by what we see. I think Cliff's going to tell you how many jobs will be coming, new businesses, and of course, more education to our county due to this investment in the future. We're seeing similar activity at the airport, you're fully aware, I think, of, of the things that have happened at the Washington Airport. That's continuing. We're on the cusp of signing a contract with a national aviation company that will likely come in and headquarter at least your drone aviation business here in the very near future. We have another company who's going to repair corporate jets that's going to be relocating at the airport within the next, we're hoping to sign a contract on that real soon, like next week. I think Mr. Alligood appears to be out sick, is that correct? Okay, that tells me why we didn't get our contract. My understanding is it's hung up at, at the county right now, awaiting approval from, from Brian Alligood to get over there. And we're going to sign that contract, initially 35 jobs, ultimately when the company relocates entire operation, we're going to be at about 100 jobs with that business alone. We're looking at several other businesses, including some Department of Defense transactions that'll be taking place there. The future is very bright for Beaufort County due to the investment that's been made by the state, the federal government, and now we're hoping just a touch, just a little bit from the county. If you're not aware, we're bringing in 100 strand 5G internet across the airport. That contract has been awarded and is underway. We're building hangars at the airport. Take a ride out there if you've not been there. It's under construction, folks. This is not something that's a pipe dream, it's not a pie in the sky to put a little pun on it. We're actually going to have this happening, and it's, it's going to be a much brighter day. A lot more taxes coming in for the county, the city, a lot more jobs for the people. And I'm hoping we can at the same time bring together the colleges of North Carolina and get them to assist us in all the way from K-12 up through the colleges here in Beaufort County. So, I stand for any questions.
Oh, Randy?
In light of the Medicaid reform, we were told that if this thing were to pass, that maybe the Aurora clinic could open back up. I know where you stand on this, but why?
Well, the why is, is because what they're telling you about that clinic opening back up probably has less to do with Medicaid expansion than they're going to lead you to believe. Okay? I believe that what's happening is you're seeing a shift in the way medicine is allocated. I'm, I'm not a big fan of a conglomerate owning all of the medical services in, in North Carolina or eastern North Carolina as we see right now. I think one of the biggest problems we see Commissioner is we have a law out there called a CONE law, don't know if you're familiar with it. It's called Certificate of Need. So, in order for a competitive business to open within the footprint of certain medical facilities, you have to get a certificate of need from the state, which requires the state to agree to do it, which is then fought by the very people who closed down those clinics. Because we're trying to funnel that business into a different area. I'm not saying that's the only reason they did it. One of the things I pointed out when they came into my office this past week, they said, well, yeah, we're, we're just seeing a lot of more expenses now from the nursing shortage. I asked them, I said, is that not somewhat of a self-inflicted wound? How many nurses were terminated due to not taking the vaccine that they required? He said, only 11. I said, no. Maybe officially, you only terminated 11. But there was a lot of them that quit because they refused to get the vaccine, they may not have told you that's why they quit. Here's the interesting part Commissioners, some of those very nurses left and went to work for the traveling nurse program, where they make a lot more money. Where if I didn't now has to pay a lot more money. Okay? Here's the funny thing, they weren't required to get the vaccine to be a traveling nurse. So, we hired back the same people at four and five times the money, and then they want to tell you they're going broke. I think there might have been bad management in there somewhere. Not sure, but that's just my personal opinion. And we've had that discussion in my office this week.
Yes. Continuing with CONE, Certificate of Need, we now have a large majority of Republicans in Raleigh, you know, both Senate and the House.
Not quite enough, but yes.
Be nice to, you know, we got enough. Why can't we end Certificate of Need in North Carolina? It's not needed any longer. It's long since passed forth through the point that it's of any use. We, we're not a rural state anymore, by the way, and you know that.
Absolutely.
When are the legislators up in Raleigh going to realize that and stop government helping all these large conglomerates with a monopoly?
Commissioner, it's a great question, and thank you for that, because I've actually run that very bill all four years that I've been in Raleigh, to repeal the CONE laws. It's getting some traction now. Unfortunately, the only traction it's getting is they want to tie it to Medicaid expansion. Now, I'll be honest with you, and I think most of you know me, if you tie it to Medicaid expansion, I'll vote no. Okay? I will not compromise my principles because you're going to dangle some fruit in front of me and think.
Thank you Keith, that's, that's, that's what they're doing. They're playing a game to get big government still in charge and getting help from conglomerates. And it's, it's.
And Commissioners realize this, the federal government had CONE laws. The federal government determined CONE laws were a bad thing and repealed them. When's the last time you heard of the federal government stepping away from bigger government? That kind of tells you how bad they are.
Keith, we thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And since we've got another elected official that asked to be on the program, we're going to allow him that time.
If I could take three seconds, Mr. Davenport, I'd like to invite you to Raleigh to make your presentation to the North Carolina House Freedom Caucus. Thirty-four members who would be very interested in seeing what you're talking about with, particularly marijuana being a gateway drug. Commissioners, thank you very much, I hope you enjoy your evening.
Thank you for what you do. Mayor?
Oops.
We're happy to have the Mayor of Aurora with us, Cliff Williams, and I see his motion for the economic developer to come up there with him, so.
If I can take just a minute and speak to the medical problem, speak to the medical problem he was just talking about, like the Aurora Medical Center closing down. The last time that I went to that medical center, and I can afford to go someplace else and have, but I think I was, I felt I was very sick, and I work a lot, so I decided to go to the medical center. Not a park, not a car in the parking lot. And I walked in, I said, I'd like to see a provider. And they said, do you have an appointment? And I said, no. And I said, but I'm sick. And they said, well, you have to have an appointment. I said, you don't have a car out here, you think I could get one? And, no. I was not able to get an appointment, not able to see anybody at that clinic, and they hadn't, they didn't have one soul in there that was a customer or a sick person in there. No cars in the parking lot, they turned me away. So, I don't believe that this place was lacking because, you know, it didn't have business. It was not run properly. That was the problem. It's always like I say, if I ran my business like they ran their business, I'd be out of business. That was the whole purpose of that. What I'm here tonight for is I just want to brief the Board on where we are with the industrial park and some things that are going on in Aurora. We've been working very hard, you know, the cost of our industrial park doubled from April until the last couple of months. And, you know, it was either back off and do nothing, or, or push to try to raise the funds to get us where we need to be, because we need this industrial park in Aurora. It is the springboard for everything else that we're working on to make happen. Brad Hufford, I just want to say congratulations on getting this guy, he's worked his tail off for us, and I'm honored to be on his Board. So, I know what he's going through to try to get us where we need to be. But currently where we are is we were, with the cost doubling, we were about $1.26 million We have been able, we have gotten commitments from Golden Leaf of $500,000, and we feel like, we're almost certain that Commerce is going to come up with another $500,000, and they will make their announcement on the 16th through the Rural Infrastructure So, at that point, we'll know how much money that we have raised, and we're also, we've also submitted bids to find out if the costs have come down. I feel like the costs, construction costs are coming down. So, we should have maybe more real numbers of where this thing is going to be. And at that point, you know, I'd like to come back to this Board, and it's probably next month, and, you know, have, and I want to have discussions with y'all, you know, in advance of that, keep you informed to tell you where we are, and then see what we can do to try to get where we need to be. So, I look forward to your leadership, and maybe y'all can help us achieve this goal of getting this industrial park going. Last Thursday, and I'm not going to tell you who, but, because I really want to save it for the, for the big announcement, but we're going to have, we've got an opportunity coming up, I'm really excited about, is, I'll speak to that announcement later. But we've got a lot, lot of interest in Aurora. We've got, I'm talking with people in South America that want to come to Aurora. You know, they're totally socialist down there, and they're trying to move their manufacturing north, so, got some opportunities there. And we've got another business that is trying to locate in Aurora, having problems with DEQ. Can't seem to get past that one stumbling by. But, other than that, is there anything you'd like to speak to?
Not really, just that, that, you know, this project has been a big part of what we've been working on for the Town of Aurora, and it's the start of a lot to execute with their strategic plan. And we think that the industrial park will give us a good, positive win for the Town of Aurora, and will lead to new jobs and the increase in the tax base of not just the Town of Aurora, but also over county.
If you, if you'll just keep Katie in mind, she needs to do roughly five days to get on the agenda, so that we don't have to put you in the elected officials.
I apologize for that. Things are just happening so quickly that I felt like I needed to brief y'all, and.
And we appreciate that.
And that's why I came up here tonight, I have a board meeting to go to as well, so. But I'll try to do a better job of keeping everybody informed.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your time.
And we thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're getting to items for consent. Is there any item that you would like to have pulled? Chairman? Yes. Item 5, opioid spending resolution. Anyone else? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the items for consent.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right, the next item is, let me get to the right page here. It's page 147. We're going to go into a public hearing, and I need a motion to go into the public hearing to abandon and close a portion of the former location of Secondary Road 1516. So, is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of going into the public hearing, raise your right hand. hand. Okay, as you well know, we went through the first part of that before, and so we're down to, at this point, seeing if there's anybody, did anybody register? So we didn't have anyone register for public comment as it relates to it. So I guess, is there any questions from the commissioners that relates to it?
Mr. Chairman, a point of order. I don't think they have to register to, so, anybody that's in the audience that wants to speak can speak. They don't have to register.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak? Did you?
Yes. Good evening, board. Just wanted to let you know that I'm available to answer any questions that you may have about this, as well as the petitioners. They are present if you have any questions about the development itself.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Wait, wait a minute. Let me just ask one more time. Is there a citizen, I'm doing this for good, is there a citizen here that would like to speak? Okay?
Try it again.
All right.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Okay, yes, and we got a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, raise your right hand. All right. Now, we need to formally approve the order to abandon and the permanent closure of a portion of the former location of Secondary Road 1516. So I have, got a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions of Amanda? All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. You did a good job.
Well, thank you.
Did a good job. Okay, we're down to the tax assessor, Lloyd.
Good evening. Happy y'all are doing great. So I'm here with you tonight. It's a little different. We have the Board of Equalization review dates in front of you. Those are actually really just need, okay, well, I actually have a whole set. I'm giving you the November ones. Y'all don't have to decide on that now if y'all don't want, but we're just trying to say we're doing a spring and a fall like we've done the last year or two. You can go ahead and set those tonight, or you can not, the November ones, as far as that goes. I don't think there's going to be an issue for that. And we do have the April dates, which would be our actual dates as far as the board goes. We just need two of them. We really need one as a backup.
I would recommend that we go ahead and put on the calendar both April and November. So any problems with any of these dates?
November 6th, I'll meet, constable.
November 6th, and a constable.
Was it, I looked at that wrong, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It was Veterans Day.
And the 7th is Election Day.
Yep.
Even a lot of us have thought for reelection.
I didn't know with that being a problem.
I don't, I don't think that's a problem. Here again, we're required to have four commissioners.
That's right. I think you can do, in November, I'm pretty sure you're going to get one day. I don't think you're going to need to, you can do one as a backup, but I really think one day's all it's going to need. The last couple of years we've done it.
We just deleted the Monday.
Okay, we'll delete Monday. Is there another day that's not appropriate?
Well, doesn't make any difference. I'm not here on the 18th, Tuesday.
Okay.
That gives him his two days. That gives him his two days that he needs, so I don't think we really need to have a day.
Okay.
So just to make sure I'm understanding, I think we do Monday as the primary, April 17th, the Tuesday, the April 25th will be backup if something happened for that, or we need additional, and then as far as the November, those two Tuesdays would be the dates, the primary and the backup.
I thought we were, you're talking about November the 6th, we're deleting November the 6th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are we eliminating one of the other ones in April, or leaving those there?
I thought, my understanding was Monday, April 17th would be the primary date, and if we needed a second day as a backup or anything else, April 25th would be the backup.
Okay, so we're striking 18?
That's what I thought I understood.
Okay.
We could do that, if you don't side, I mean...
Okay. Entertainer motion?
No move.
Second. All right. All those in favor of these four dates, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Is that it? Thanks, Lord.
Thanks, Lord.
All right, items for decision, the sheriff's office, Captain Gerard.
Chairman, Commissioner, I brought before through tonight is a purchase order for another 2023 charger to replace our agent fleet. This will be nine this year. They were approved in the 2223 budget.
Okay, we got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion?
Yes, of course.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this was in the nine that were budgeted. I thought we were buying this car because one was in a rack.
It's, well, that rig happened before Sheriff Hammonds took over, so I kind of inherited that rig. So I got a list of our fleet, if you'd like to look at, and I can explain to you what we got going on.
Yeah, I'd like to see a fleet list.
I'm good. I'm good.
So right now, we have 37 patrol cars, either marked in cage or unmarked in cage. The average mileage of those 37 is 95,377. So we're looking at nine vehicles right now with over 125,000 miles on them. So it takes, it'll probably take six months before we can get these ready to be put on the road. So even the ones with 125,000, in six months, they'll have another 15,000 on them.
Okay, any other comments? Got a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the contract purchase, raise your right hand. Those opposed? It was, yeah, seven.
Thank you.
We're good.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, the next is Health Department, Janelle.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm okay. How are y'all?
Good.
So I'm here, we've had two positions that last fall were actually reclassified, one for our front and then another public health educator, too, and I'm here to ask you guys to approve that reclassification from the state on their jobs.
So they were reclassified by last year?
Yes, they were in October and I want to say either September or November.
So what are you guys supposed to do now, if they were already reclassified?
So they were reclassified by the state, but it was not brought to the board until me right now, or to you as the board right now. So technically, they've been doing the job that was reclassified since then, but we haven't brought it to the chair since now.
I have something, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Now, Janelle, with fair warning at the last meeting...
Yes.
This business about the state reclassifying jobs, in my opinion, is a racket.
Right.
It's being worked on the commissioners, and they're sitting here approving this stuff. Who initiated the description that was sent to the state?
So actually, their evaluation, or not their evaluations, the reclassifications haven't been done for those positions in a while. So one of them, I actually submitted, it was one of my old department. It's the job that she was already doing. I actually didn't change a thing in her job description, submitted it, and it was reclassified as a two because of all the attributes that she contributes.
It was, it was, she was reclassified without her job description writing having been changed?
Yeah, she actually was doing that beforehand.
Well, for the benefit of the public, we've been escalating these jobs that, in social services, in the Health Department in particular, with the same kind of thing that's going on here. And that is, the state has reclassified this job, so you have to give her a raise. You don't have a choice. This is part of our problem in keeping up our payment plan, which is intended to be fair to all employees. You just heard the initiation comes from the county to the state. So if someone wants to get a raise for someone, what they do is rewrite the description a little bit, tinker with it, or send it to Raleigh for a reevaluation. What do you think? Get the state to reevaluate it, and then it comes back as, oh, the state did this, the county didn't do this. So I'm putting against these things, because I see it as a way of escalating pay for people without the county commissioners having a hand in making sure that they're actually doing what we think they're doing.
I understand that, but I would vote that me coming here is hopefully your hand in having that feedback of what they're doing. And like I said, the job that she has been doing, she's doing exactly what the job description says she is. Some of those programs include medical components that haven't ever been beforehand, and also reimbursable, so there's some finance we get back. If we were to take away some of those programs to keep her current, like to do what she's currently doing as a one versus a two, you'd be taking, you'd have to take away a program that she offers to the community in order to not be doing something that not being compensated for.
Motion to approve. Got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor of the reclassification, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Okay, and then the other thing would be the Health Department Emergency Management LED building sign. There's no cost to the county. Right now, we have a sign in our front that, you know, we share our building's parking lot, that is the lovely, place your letters in there rainy days, cold days, dirty days. And we have the funding right now to replace that with electric sign that we can update from our phone. It is the use of COVID funding, so it is no use to, I mean, no county funds. However, I would say, obviously, you know that the Health Department does a lot more than just COVID-19, and that utilization of that education sign would be for all purposes, all your long education and not just COVID at all.
Motion to approve. Motion and a second. I got a question from John.
Janelle, if this is an informational sign, would it be possible to put it in a higher traffic area?
Well, that Highland Drive's pretty traffic area. Yeah, I was like, would you like to buy me a new building?
Move the Health Department, that's a remote control.
What, when you say more traffic area, what would first come to your mind?
Higher traffic, 264, 15th.
Um...
If their intent is to get information to the public, then...
So I would challenge up with two things. For the entrance sign, we still need a sign. I would say Highland Drive is highly trafficked if you ever want to come out there, and it's very trafficked. As far as 264, we don't own that property out there, so getting a sign out there would be very difficult.
Correct me a day, ignorant money in the budget for the animal control having a digital sign, pretty sure that I've seen.
Yes, yes, sir.
Which will give us that option.
We know there's an opportunity they could use that animal control sign to advertise their things, yes.
Okay, any other comments? All those in favor of the LED building sign, raise your right hand?
Well, I have a question.
I asked him, I didn't hear anything.
Well, the motion, there's, 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 lots happened since he said so moved, I'm sorry.
Lots happened since he said so moved on the motion. Is the sign going to be on 264, or is it going to be on Highland Drive? No, it's on Highland Drive.
The statement of the 264 was the animal control, I think, is put in for one as well, that we could multipurpose the same educational sign if there was that need.
This amount of money is how much?
I think it's 34.
34,279. Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Janelle. All right, we're down to Emergency Management, Jeff and Chris. I guess it's going to be it.
We're going to tag team this one for today. Good evening, commissioners.
Yes, sir.
We're before you today to ask for approval, to receive some funding that we are now eligible for, for a study that we have been participating in. So the background behind this is in mid 2021, we were approached by UNC School of Medicine to, to share some information about pediatrics. They were doing a study on pediatric care, and they were targeting rural counties, rural healthcare providers. They looked at 10 different counties. The benefit for us is we were, we were entitled through participating in various training components. And if you can think of pediatric calls, we're talking about kids, obviously, those are what we would refer to as low frequency, high potential calls, right? It's not a call that we run very often, but when we run them, they're typically bad. And it's kind of that muscle memory that a lot of times that we're lacking on when it comes to pediatric care, because we don't do it all the time. And a lot of things, when we're doing these advanced interventions, drug medications and things like that, those dosages are different. So we really wanted to improve our level of care and training on pediatric calls, and participating in this study gave us some of those training avenues that would not otherwise, or we wouldn't otherwise be afforded to, to have. So this is a four-year agreement with UNC School of Medicine, and the first two years, again, was those sharing of resources. They give us training aids. We share with them some of our information that's allowable through HIPAA to participate. In the third and fourth year, UNC actually pays us some money. It's equivalent to $300 per month, and on that, we can, we can purchase equipment, we can sponsor people to go to classes, we could use that money to provide training for our employees. And that is why we're bringing it to you now. We're in that, we're approaching that third year, where money is now eligible for us as a participant in that study, asking for your permission to accept that from UNC. And with that, I have Jeff here, who will be happy to answer any specific questions related to it that you may have.
Have a motion to approve and a second. Questions?
Well, we're going to get $300 a month?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Y'all, one of the problems, I'm going to vote against this, because we're just making government bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. Getting into a study with UNC is probably going to result in UNC coming back at the end of the study, asking the legislature to oppose some more laws and some more regulations on us. About how many pediatric calls do you make a year?
Jeff, you're busy.
Yeah, percentage of right now, we are at, compared to our adult, about 12%. We don't run but about between 120 to 165 pediatric calls a year. And for a provider, that is a high anxiety thing, because the medications are so different, how you administer them, because actually, you know, you think, well, you just give a little bit less than you give adult, and that's not true on a lot of them. A lot of them, for example, versed, you have to give them two times what the amount you would give an adult, because of the way they metabolize it. And this is some of the stuff that they're reinforcing for. It is really a good thing, and it's not costing the county a penny. The only thing we're having to do is share our data, so they can see what they need to be working on on the clinical side to be able to support us in this.
Well, there is a cost to the county, because you're taking up somebody's time for this training and to give this information.
That's what that $300 is for, is to be able to pay them to do that.
But you've already been doing that for two years, so that's an expense on the county.
Very minimal, though.
And don't you, you know, we're talking about a travel time of anywhere from 15 minutes to 30 minutes to get the individual to the emergency room, and you're in contact with an emergency room doctor who can advise and oversee these pediatric dosages. So, you know, this to me, you know, I hate to say this, had kids of my own, but is a program that is not really that necessary, and it looks like it's just burning the county with more and more of more and more, and I can't support it, because I don't see a real need for it. I see a program that somebody has a political move behind it at UNC, because they're going to be asking for something or imposing more regulations when this thing's over with. So I'm, you know, it's, to me, it's another thing. Big government bothers me. I sit here, and we keep voting to make government bigger and bigger and bigger. No, it's not costing anything, and you just need to give us permission to go out and do this and do that. No, I'm not, I'm not going to do it, because I don't think it's necessary.
This is, if I understand it correctly, we've been doing it since April of 21, and it's really kind of research data-driven.
That's correct. So we have been sharing with information with UNC since September of 2021, and that sharing is basically monthly reports that we send to UNC. So these are quick reports that we can, that we can pull from our PCR database that says these are the number of calls and the instances in which we responded to pediatric patients. Those are submitted in a way that are compliant to HIPAA, and that information is shared with UNC. So you're correct, we have invested some manpower in fulfilling this... So you're, you're correct, we have invested some manpower in, in fulfilling this agreement so far, but it has been, has been minimal on our part, and that these are quick, these are quick reports that we can produce. And in regards to what the longevity of this study is and where UNC may carry it, obviously, I, I can't speak to that. What I can speak to as a provider, and especially as a parent provider, like I had mentioned earlier, pediatric calls are not a call frequency that we run a lot. And when you run them, it hits, it's close to the heart. So that level of anxiety that Jeff had mentioned that comes with these calls, that's real, that's felt by our providers. And that's where we see the benefit of these continuous training through pediatric calls. We see that as a benefit in participating in that study. If we can curb that anxiety, we will certainly try.
Well, whether you do this a lot, you'll be have these calls, just just do a better research. It don't take a whole lot of time, press one button, send the report to do the research. You've been doing it all along, and you're not going to have to hire another person or anything to do it with.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
And maybe one day they'll, they'll find some kind of solution that help one of our children. Thank you.
Okay, got a motion on the floor. All those in favor of approving the contract with UNC or the, what do you call it, the grant, which is tied to the agreement we already have? Raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right, thank you, gentlemen. We're down to seven o'clock, so we're going to take our break, and we will be back shortly.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening, Christina.
On page 185 of your agenda book, you'll see the presentation tonight regarding the Beaufort County Water Department water line relocation across Chaco Innity Creek on Highway 33, which is just east of Chaco Innity. The North Carolina Department of Transportation is planning to construct a new bridge on North Carolina Highway 33 crossing Chaco Innity Creek. The construction includes a temporary bridge that will be located south of the current bridge, which will be dismantled once the new bridge is completed. Construction impacts the existing 16-inch diameter Beaufort County water line that crosses Chaco Innity Creek currently. The existing line must be relocated for the project to continue. North Carolina DOT desires that the water line relocation be performed as a separate contract and has agreed to pay all costs associated with this relocation. To support the design and construction activities, North Carolina DOT has approved a utility preliminary engineering agreement and a utility relocation agreement which allocates NC DOT funds for this project. North Carolina DOT has been working with McDavid Associates and will continue working with them and Beaufort County to complete this project. Attached, you'll see the resolution which approves the UPE and the URA Technical Services Agreement, as well as establishes a capital project fund to complete this work. Again, Beaufort County will not be responsible for any calls based upon the approved current scoping. Any questions?
Yes, yes. John?
Is there any potential downside for us taking on this responsibility?
No, sir. No, sir, this is, we...
I mean, this is something we do.
Yes, sir, we do, do it frequently. Culverts as well as bridges, the smaller bridges in Beaufort County, I can't even tell you the number that have been replaced in the past three years. That's been a push that DOT has had to upsize the culverts because of flooding, that's a card. Water lines that are in conflict for construction projects is something that we deal with frequently. This water line, again, is a bore, it's a 16-inch HDP fusible pipe that goes underneath that, so that does need to be relocated. So there's really no choice that the water line must be relocated because that's where the temporary bridge will be. The way that DOT has chosen to do it is to the benefit of the county in that we will go in and bid this project and move the water line before DOT starts any bridge construction. That way, it minimizes any effects on our customers.
Christina?
Yes, sir.
I see where it's been bid at, at $966,000. Now, if you started doing construction and, and something happens, and there's a change or there's something, did DOT pick up their costs also, or do the county absorb it?
Typically, DOT will pick up that cost. Historically, that's what's happened, and the project has not been bid out yet, that's the estimate for the, the cost, the total cost of the project.
Now, the questions I'm about to ask Christina are, I'm concerned as a taxpayer, both for the state and the county.
Yes, sir.
With this particular project.
Yes, sir.
And to get me oriented, as you cross that bridge heading toward Aurora, the 16-inch line is on the right-hand side.
Yes, sir.
There is a forced main for sewage on the left-hand side.
For the town of Chaco Innity?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
That's right, okay. Now, you're going to, the state, and you may say, I don't have anything to do with that, but right now, you're on the grill. The state, the state is going to build a bridge that will handle truck traffic as a temporary bridge.
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay. Now, as a taxpayer, this is going to cost a tremendous amount of money to, you know, our little million dollars in this is nothing. It's probably going to cost 10 or 12, 15 million dollars to get a temporary bridge in there to do what they want it to do. My question is, has the county said to them, why don't you use a detour instead of building this bridge? Have we talked with them about this? I mean...
We did in the, what is it?
Yeah, the hearing. What are you, RPO?
The problem was that the detour is going to be so long that it violated, I think it violated some laws regarding emergency services, so the ambulances couldn't get there within the timeframe that they're required.
Well, isn't there Price Road and a couple of other short roads?
No, it's, you can go down to Gray, but you gotta, you gotta go all the way out to, that's the name of the church way out there. Anyways, it's way out there, south.
Well...
And there's no, no way to go around the other side.
$20 million is what this looks to me like of unnecessary expense that could be handled with a, with a detour. Plus, you know, the state of California, when they had their earthquakes and all of these overpasses and everything fell in, they found out that they could put together stuff, that they could rebuild some of this stuff very, very quickly, and they, because they had to, they didn't have a choice. And I don't understand why we don't go back to the state of North Carolina and start talking with them about this. When was this public hearing? I don't think I had notice of a public hearing on this.
I think, I don't know if there was a public hearing, but it was talked about in the, what is it, TAC, Transportation Advisory Committee?
I believe that's correct. Brian attends those meetings, so I'm not...
Well, nobody, nobody brought this up because you're talking about a lot of money, of taxpayers' money, and I, I think the taxpayers need to be treated better than this. Plus, you can always go back, if you're just talking about rules, you can go back and have laws and rules changed, you can get special dispensations, and I'm concerned that the Department of Transportation is going to waste $20 million that they don't need to waste for nothing, is what I'm concerned about. I'm also concerned that this didn't come to the Commissioners long before now, so I'm going to vote against this. Yes, Randy?
How long will the customers be without water?
None. No. At the, no, sir, and this is actually on the transmission line, this is the line that was put in in 2014 that goes from the south side water treatment plant to the north side of the river. So because this is a bore, they would go in and do the bore. There may be a period of time where that transmission line is down for a few hours when we actually do the tie-in, but we always minimize any time that customers would be out and again transmission, so that would not happen.
Okay. Well, I, I just like to point out for the record that this has been mishandled by the county in bringing this to the attention of the Commissioners, because we should have, when we're wasting $20 million, when the government is wasting $20 million, Commissioners should have been involved in this a long time ago.
Chairman and Commissioner Richardson, again, I say I will never argue with you from the podium, but North Carolina DOT sends us and they contact us when they are making bridge, doing construction on current bridges, or they're doing culverts and things like that. So Beaufort County Water Department lines are in the right of way of NC DOT, basically by their permission. So they are allowing us to be there. So our water line is there, if this project goes through, this water line needs to be protected, so I believe it's in the best interest to, to, to go through and accept this agreement because, again, they are paying to relocate our water line, they are not forcing us to do it. So part of the project budget is to move our water line.
Okay, got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Clarification before the vote. All those, all those in favor, are we going to do it in one motion, David and Katie? There's three, three agreements? Okay. No, no. Okay. Got a motion, was there a second?
A second.
And a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay. All right, thank you, Christina. Okay, Nita is going to do the financial report, and while she's there, she's going to do the consent item that was pulled as related to the opioid settlement, and then she's also going to handle two of the items that county manager was going to handle. She'll handle pay and classification and the fund balance transfer.
Right.
That'll be what, four? Is it four in a row?
Yes, sir. And I have a handout for you for the presentation, but I think somebody stole it, so it's not starting out well. But you do have it up before you, and I know some of the numbers are small, but I'll, I'll get you a printout if you'd like one after the meeting. So this time of year, I like to do our pretty thorough mid-year review of the financials, mainly because we received most of our tax money by this time, we received a good five months of our sales tax numbers, so we're starting to see, you know, where we are as far as budget actual goes on a lot of our important revenues. But I am looking at this weekly at a minimum, so as far as reporting to you, I did want to come to you tonight with the general fund multi-year review, and I'll have solid waste in water for you hopefully at next month's meeting. Kind of a little tight on me with time. So the first thing I wanted to show you is where we're at with our general fund revenue collections. This would be for the period of July 1, 2022, this first day of the fiscal year through January 31, 2023. So the general fund this year has a $68.9 million budget, and you can see, because we have to operate under a balanced budget to support those types of expenditures, we have to have $68.9 million worth of revenue come in, and that's what we're looking at here. So as of, sorry, January 31st, we've already collected $48.157 million of our revenue, about 68.9 million or 70% of that. And you can see, of course, most of our revenue is our property tax dollars. As of January 31st, we've collected 35.6 million in property taxes, or 91% of the budget to the amount. Our second largest revenue is sales tax, and through January 31st, that would be five months collections, because remember, I always tell you about the lag in time of three months on those, on receiving those. We're at 5.5 million or 44% of the amount that was budgeted to be collected. And then our third, after sales tax, our third largest revenue is the restricted intergovernmental revenues, and this is our federal and state dollars that we get to support DSS and health programs, and we've collected 4.6 million so far, or 40.7%. An interesting fact here, those three revenues that I just spoke about, property taxes, sales tax, and that restricted money from the state and federal government, that makes up 89% of our county general fund revenues. So all those little, little, small colors in red, orange, purple, and green, that's basically budgeted, if you want to call it that. So drilling down a little bit in our property tax billing, I like to always look at the current year levy compared to what last year's was, and you can see here, now, this is just the current levy, if you look back up here, that property taxes that we've collected so far, the 35.6, that includes all levies, all prior delinquent, delinquent levies, interest, penalties, all that stuff. But we're drilling down here on this slide just to the current year levy, and we're going to compare the 22 collections to the 21 collections as of January 31st, and you can see that we're already almost a million dollars above. What is that, about $950,000 above this year where we were last year?
Is that 35, 34?
35.5.
35.5 million this year compared to 34.96 million. So we're seeing a 2.6% increase in collections so far as of January 31st. Yes, sir.
Is that because the assessed value is up that much, or is it because of the collections rate?
Let's look at the next, let's look at the next slide, and that will, that will answer your question. So that's a great question, is it because billing's up or because collection rates are up? It's a combination of both. So here's the collection rates. Not much difference there, where we're talking six hundredths of a percent up as of January 31st compared to last year, so we are slightly up in collections, but not by much. But the main thing is the, the billing. The billing is, that's what's driving that. Okay, moving on to sales tax, we do have five months of sales tax data in, and you can see for the first five months of this fiscal year, we're at 5.5 million, where we were just at, right at 5 million last year, so we are running a surplus already of about a half a million dollars in sales tax. And I've told you, this has been extremely difficult for us to peg a good budget number on sales tax. It's just been hard because of the pandemic and all the COVID money that was out in the economy, you know, people spending that, not knowing when that would go away or that would be over with, and how that would affect our sales tax numbers. But you might remember at our planning retreat, we did hear DSS say, or I heard them say, and I hope I heard them right, that about March or April, they do anticipate most of that extra COVID money, pandemic money that was going out to their clients to cease. So we do think that will have some impact on our sales tax numbers moving forward. It's really difficult to know how much, though. So this is a look at our sales tax collections for the last five years. I do not know why I have invalid value number for 2018, that's not what I saw when I looked at it before, but that, where that value is, is there on that line graph, that should be 9,022,108. And so this just demonstrates that, just the robust growth that we have had in our sales tax over the last five years. We've gone from a little over 9 million to 12.8 million dollars last year. And you can see the growth percentages by year. A couple years, it was about a little over 4.5%. We had a couple years that were close to 10%, one that was 14%. So they're kind of all over the place, but it's been good. Keep riding that wave as long as we can. Another thing I wanted to mention, yes, sir?
On the sales tax piece, what are some of the big ticket items?
Yeah, we really don't get a lot of detail from the state on what makes up or what merchants...
Is it going up, up, up all the time?
Yeah, well, I think that what's driving that is we, we've had some things, the state has, has passed some laws in the past several years that have really increased our tax base. First of all, they started taxing labor on certain services. First of all, they started taxing labor on certain services that they never taxed before. So we're receiving that money. And I think they've done a really good job, the state has, of cracking down on internet sales to make sure that all of that sales tax is getting captured and remitted back to the state and flowing back to the counties as they should. But as far as getting detailed information on our local merchants and how much they remit, that, we're not privy to that information from the state. I did want to speak to you a little bit about general fund interest earnings. This has been really interesting. Got the last five years here listed on what the general fund interest earnings have been. And you can see how they were climbing in 2019, and then in 2020, they were looking great. But the pandemic happened, the Federal Reserve, they said, we got to do something so we don't go into recession. They started slashing rates. That drastically affected our interest earnings, as you can see, in 2021 and 2022. But then, as you know, more recently, in the last, what, six, eight, 10 months, the Federal Reserve has done the exact opposite. They're raising rates again. Almost every time they meet, you hear about a 25 or 50 basis point increase. Wonderful, if you've got cash in the bank like we do, our interest earnings are probably going to exceed a million dollars this year on our cash on hand. Bad for people like my son that's getting rid of our money for our house. So anyway, good for the county, though, because our interest earnings are way up in 2023. Just really quick on the expenditure side. So we're seven twelts of the way through the fiscal year, seven months out of 12. So I'd expect we'd be at about 58% spent on our budget. And the grand total for the general fund expenditures are 58.9% in total. So right in line where I would expect it to be. There are some that are much higher. There are great explanations of why it would be, because they've gone ahead and bought large equipment early in the year for whatever reason. But I've drilled down on this, and this all looks really reasonable. That's what I have on the general fund. Like I said, I'll be doing a presentation next month on solid waste and water. Didn't quite get to those. Are there any questions about general fund?
Questions up, Nita? All right. You want to get to page 23, I think it is?
Yes, sir.
For the item that was pulled?
Yes, I believe we're backing up to the consent item that was pulled on the opioid spending resolution by Commissioner Richardson, how pay opioid, Commissioner.
Yeah, what I'm concerned about is, we passed, the board passed a policy for the spending of that money. So my question, why do we need to do another policy on the spending of that money?
So this is probably overkill. We passed a budget ordinance, a project ordinance on that spending. And if you read the MOA, it talks about passing a budget ordinance as well as a more detailed spending resolution. So I think just to cover ourselves, my guess is we'd probably be okay with just the budget ordinance. But the association did recommend that we do a more detailed spending authorization. And you can see, it just gives you more detail about the strategy, what vendor or provider we plan on using, the period of time that we think the expenditures will take place. So this just gives you more detail than the budget ordinance would. So to cover ourselves, we wanted to have both. We have the budget ordinance and the spending authorization.
But I think this is because we put restrictions, we wanted to look at it three years. If you notice, all of these, the end date is 6/30/25. And actually, this is paid out over, is it 18 years?
18 years.
Paid out over 18 years.
Yeah, but I just don't see any need for this ordinance, is what I'm talking about. I think we're binding ourselves more than we bind ourselves. We already did it when we did the ordinance. So why do we need to kill twice? And the group that's recommending this is not a government group. It's the Association of County Commissioners, you know, and they recommend all kinds of stuff.
Right.
I don't see any need for this.
We do lean on them for guidance, but it is in the MOA. I did go back and read the MOA, and it does recommend that you do, in addition to a budget ordinance, adopt a more detailed spending resolution. And it can be changed. We can come back. If anything changes, we will bring back a budget amendment to the original ordinance and a spending authorization amendment as well.
But we did that, we did the budget ordinance. That tells you how the money is going to be spent. What's, I don't understand what the difference is, and I'm not interested in getting entrapped, so I'm not going to vote for this. I think it's totally unnecessary.
Is there a second? I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you. I believe you and Dolores are going to do the...
Yes, we're going to tag team the pay study.
Dolores, if you want to come up?
Sorry that Byron can't be here to present this one. This is really important. As you know, our employees are our biggest asset. I'm sure you would agree. At the January board meeting and budget retreat, there were some discussions by the board for the need to update our pay and classification plan to ensure balance and equity across that plan. So Dolores solicited proposals for that, and we did receive two back, one from the MAPS group. And MAPS is the same organization that did our study back in 2017. Their proposal came in at $40,900. And we also received one from Archer Company at a price of $33,075. So after careful consideration and reviewing the proposal, the manager, HR Director, and I are recommending to contract with MAPS Group, which is the higher proposal. And the reason that's coming in at a higher cost is you're really getting more value for your money, in a sense that MAPS is going to be looking at not only the pay, but our benefits as well. And also, the other thing is, MAPS has extensive experience with North Carolina counties doing studies. And it's really important, when you're a county in North Carolina, that for particularly DSS and Health, that we make sure that our county pay plan is consistent with the state pay plan. And Dolores knows how all that is intertwined and how that works and can expand on that if needed. But mainly for those two reasons and the fact that MAPS is local and out of Cary with less traveling costs and things, we thought that MAPS Group would do a better job for us for a pay study. So our recommendation is that we contract with MAPS Group at a price of $40,900 to update our pay and classification plan.
Questions? All right, okay.
But with the lower-priced group, we get a whole new study plan. We get a different look at what we have been doing. And I've been concerned about the look at what we've been doing that MAPS has been giving us for some time. The second thing is, the MAPS study specifically says that they are not going to compare county wages to industry wages, to private industry wages. This is a problem with me, because what I have seen, don't forget, I've been here for a while. I see the great escalator game played of, oh, this county's paying more than they're paying, so we've got to come up to them. Now, all of a sudden, another county, this, we've got to come up to them, and we've got to come up to them, and this is another government racket, as far as I'm concerned. And I think we need to go with the lower price and get a whole new look at our pay plan, instead of getting MAPS in here to recogitate what they did for us three or four years ago, for more money.
So Commissioner Richardson, may I ask, because I don't recall seeing that, does it state in MAPS proposal that they do not compare us to private industry?
Saw it in there somewhere. Yeah, what page do we go on?
It begins on page 209. Because in past experience, I was here when they did the study back in 2017. I was new, but I was here. I do recall that for like, say, the customer service representatives that take up cash collections and wait on customers primarily, my understanding is that they did compare their salaries to like, say, a bank teller, for example, to come up with a comparable there, as well as other county customer service employees' salaries.
And I would assume, like in the water department, where there are utilities, that they're using that?
Yes. That's my understanding. Yeah, and they work with municipalities as well and have done, actually, the MAPS Group had done 47 studies in local municipalities in North Carolina. And they had 24 North Carolina county studies that they had done. So they're familiar with the North Carolina statutes that pertain to HR, the requirements under the Office of State Human Resources. They're familiar with those things. And we felt that with Archer being an international company, the references...
Dolores?
Yes.
I'm getting some feedback from in the back.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
We felt that with Archer being an actual international company, and they listed in their references, they actually had only done just a handful of counties and non-counties in North Carolina. They're actually housed in South Carolina.
Well, going back to answer the question, pages three, page 211, item B at the bottom says, "A survey of salary plans will be formed utilizing nearby regional public sector jurisdictions."
And/or other identified organizations for the purpose of recommending wages and salaries. And I think they do, when necessary, reach out to industrial companies.
Well, that's in their opinion when they need to. You know, I think if we're going to do this study, we need to specifically say we want them to do comparisons with comparable jobs in industry.
I'm not sure if you'd like the results of that study, if you did that, because historically, governmental employees' wages are not as much as those in the industry.
That was true in the old days. That has not been true recently. Government employees are doing very much better than private industry employees. We need to make the comparison just so that we know.
I mean, we can certainly request of MAPS that they do those types of comparisons as well as our other peer counties around us and municipalities.
Well, I think we need two considerations here. One consideration is whether we're going to use MAPS or not, and the other one is how to change this contract so that we get what we think we're paying for.
Do we know that the other company uses industry?
I think they both do. I think the major concern with Archer is their lack of experience with North Carolina counties and how important it is in North Carolina that particularly for DSS and Health employees, which is a huge number, that's half of our employees, I would say, almost 200 employees probably, that our pay plan is in line with the state pay plan. And MAPS is very familiar with that and reviewing that type of thing.
We don't actually have any information on the other proposal. It's not in there.
Well, staff has saved us from having to analyze either proposal. They've just brought us what they want. So, you know, it's up to you guys whether you're going to take the staff recommendation or go with the other company, which is a set of new eyes that I think we need.
What's the wishes?
Motion to approve the MAPS Group.
Got a motion to approve the MAPS Group. I have an amendment to that, if you will accept it, and that is that in item B, we say that regional public sector and comparison with comparative jobs in industry. No, it's not in there.
It says in other identified organizations, but I will add, I don't think that's going to be an issue at all.
Okay.
And industrial companies.
You accept that?
Yes.
All right. Okay, we got a second.
Of course, at this point in time, we're moving forward with doing the class study, right?
We'll pass it tonight. We will. And it's a pretty accelerated schedule. That was also in the proposal. So our hope would be that we can get this wrapped up in June so that we can go ahead and implement it next year's budget.
Commissioner Richardson and Langley would accept this friendly amendment. I'd like to put an amendment on it. Last time we done this MAPS study, and the reason we're having it done right now is because we drug it out two years, and it got us out of whack. I make a motion if we approve, and whatever they bring back to us, we all go ahead on and implement it at that time.
I'm not going to accept that. That's a pig in the poke. You don't know what they're going to bring back. The reason we didn't accept it before is because it was a lot of money, and some of it was unfair money, and there was controversy over it. So I'm going to vote for a pig in the poke.
I have the numbers from the last study. I thought this might come up, so I did want to pull that. Funding last time was an issue. And hindsight, you know, you don't want to do a pay study if you can't pay for it. So that is a lesson well learned. I do think that we're in different financial circumstances this time, for sure, as you've been hearing me say every time I stand up here. We're getting ready to talk about moving $5.6 million in excess fund balance next, after this. But just to go back to the last study, and this print is so small. So they presented us, MAPS presented us with three implementation options. The first option was to bring employees to the probationary step and give a 1% increase per year of service using their hire date, okay? The second proposal was to move employees to the probationary step and give them a 1% per year raise based on their date in their most recent position, all right? And then the third option was to give them to 2.5 probationary state, 2.5% of probationary state, plus a half percent per year using the position date. So option one was the richest option, and what it meant is, let's say I started as a finance tech and worked my way all the way up to the finance officer's position. So in option one, they would go back and look at my years of service since the time I worked as a finance tech, which might have been 20 or 25 years ago. Whereas option two and three said, no, you know, she should have been compensated for that big jump up to finance officer. So we're just going to look at where she's at as the finance officer. So that's the really big difference between the different options. So option one was a rich option, going back to the original hire date, no matter if they've had a promotion or not, and that cost was 1.4 million. Option two went back to the date they were in their latest position, that was 1.1 million, and that was given a 1% per year raise. And then option three was only given a half percent, so it was almost half the price. It was $700,000. So we went with the middle option. We went with, you know, not the richest thing, but not the lowest. We went with option two.
I understand what you're saying, but the reason we're having this conversation tonight is because we waited two years to do that option. And that's because of...
We did. We waited.
And if we do it this time, we're going to be doing another MAPS study or ASER, whatever the name is.
I completely agree.
Yes. But that is the concern that I have. And the reason, other concern I have, if you're going to do it, go ahead on and pull the plug and do it, because you got to get employees' morale down. They already know they're underpaid. And then when you go take a study, when you go do a study and prove that they're underpaid and don't give them no more money, that causes other problems. So I hope and pray if this passes. Now, if July 1st, if it come back by July 1st, I intend to vote to make it hold. That's my intentions. Now, I'm not doing it just because somebody, I want to stop y'all coming in talking about reclassifications. I'm doing it to make a right, a wrong right.
I 100% agree that we do not need to do a study and let it sit on a shelf for three years until we implement it.
This is really going to be five years between the one we implemented and where we're going to be.
Six.
Six.
Yeah, the study was done in '17.
Other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify this motion, the motion doesn't include the expenditure wants the study... once the study is done. I don't think commissioners can appropriate money until we know the amount that we're appropriating. I don't think we can do an open-ended thing anyway, as Commissioner Booth would like for us to do. So I like that off the table. But I want to point out something else that you two ladies can get as mad at me as you want to get, and that is, you are meeting with a pay study to, for your own salaries are included in that pay study. Now, we came back the last time with this business about one year pay per year of service and all that. I really don't support that because it's unfair to hard-working employees. It lets people that don't really do a good job get a lot of money really quick.
I think you're referring to the longevity piece.
Yes. Now, let me go back and shift gears a minute and get into something else. If this is passed, I'm not going to vote for it, the way it's proposed, but if this is passed, I've said before, and I'm going to say again for the record, I want to meet with the people when they meet with you on their first trip here and subsequent trips as a commissioner. And I want to be notified.
Yes, sir.
And I don't want to be notified on an hour's notice. I want an adequate notice.
Other comments? All right? All those in favor of the motion to go with the MAPS study, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. You want to go to the fund balance transfer?
Yes, sir. And I am on page 228 of your book. So as all of you know, we do have a little bit of extra fund balance, unassigned fund balance in the general fund, and this was predominantly generated by pandemic funds from the federal government. So we have a policy that says we will strive to maintain a 35% unassigned fund balance. Currently, we're at 45.91%, and that difference of 10.9% in dollars equates to 5,624,285. We spoke about this at the Finance Committee in December. We spoke about this at the planning retreat, and it is the recommendation of the Finance Committee, of the county manager, and myself as the finance officer, that we move that money according to your fund balance policy to a capital reserve that has already been established for facility upgrades and improvements, or any new facilities that may be needed in the future. So I entertain a motion to that effect, please.
Mr. Chairman, no, that's me.
Mr. Chairman, may we entertain a motion for that?
Well, before the motion-
Okay, go ahead. I have some comments before the motion. We're doing a budget. This move here circumvents the flexibility of this board to do a budget and possibly return some of this high tax money back to the citizens of Beaufort County who are paying this money. They are being overtaxed, or we would not be accumulating money of this type. And I would also say that we're spending money with both hands as a county. So this is very, very excessive. We should not do anything to encumber this money because once you vote tonight to put this money into a capital reserve fund, what you're telling the taxpayers is, we are not going to consider using taxes. That's what you're telling taxpayers. We don't have to make this decision now. It's an effort to lock up the money supposedly, which is not really locked up, but it's an effort to play games with the budget, and that's all that it is. We need to pass on this tonight with no action. This needs to be considered as part of the budget, which is coming up. It needs to be considered as part of the budget, along with a tax reduction for the people who are hard-working out there and who are paying this money.
John just asked.
At the budget retreat, I gave you all a forward look at the costs that we were going to incur over the next five years in terms of capital expense that's been documented by the reserve study that was done back in '17. If we end up spending that money as projected, and there's no reason that we won't, because it may be off by a year or two years, but you're going to still spend the money, the roof's not going to self-repair itself. But in any case, we are going to, if you put that money into that, along with a half a million dollars that we've been putting in each year, you're still going to run out of all that money by 2028. If we don't put it in there, what you're telling the taxpayer is, we're going to start taxing you higher in order to pay for these expenses. And that makes no sense to me either. So at the end of the day, if we go forward with a budget process that says this budget year, we're going to have a million dollars more in sales tax revenue, and we're going to have evaluations are going up, and we're going to have that much more in real estate taxes, then we can talk about rates lowering the taxes. But you're still going to spend this money on the capital regardless.
Stan, and answering, maybe offering as a retort to what you're saying, John. Government, we in particular, are poor allocators of services, we're poor allocators of money. The money is better suited back in the pockets of the taxpayers. We have the full authority of police power to tax however we need to, whenever we need to. We can go get that money. Plus, we have way too much money in the fund balance right now. The taxpayer needs relief. The ones I talked to need relief. Holding money as in reserve, saying, we have this to spend, maybe we will have these wish lists fulfilled. And in particular, times like now, where it costs so much to get work done because of Bidenflation, that is a sorry excuse for management when we get caught in this vice that is going on now, and we can wait, maybe at a better time, and spend that money in a much better manner, a much more prudent manner.
I make a motion to approve. But there's still people who want to talk. But why do you want me to talk? Now, you can still get a chance. I'll make a-
Motion to approve. You don't run this show.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Randy, do you have anything?
No.
Well, I agree with John. We are still obligated to keep up all of the buildings at the community college, all the buildings at the schools, and all the buildings that the county uses. And, you know, my experience is, if you really want to get the life of a building, stretch it out another 15, 20, or even 30 years, you have to make some major repairs. We have not done anything at all in eight years on the sheriff's office. And we keep saying, you know, we're going to replace the carpet, we're going to replace the ceiling, we're going to replace the lights, but we still have issues with the bathrooms over there. So I mean, if we want to update that building and get another 25 or 30 years, we got to pull them out, and we got to do some major work on it. That's what this fund is all about. It does not say that we have to spend the money in the next 12 months if the building cost is too high. I mean, it's there for future commissioners, not just us, but for future commissioners to be able to do it. It's just prudent financial responsibility, and it's a fiduciary responsibility of us that are up here to make sure that the county has those funds to maintain the buildings that we have. I mean, everybody understands when we have a major building at the college or at the schools, where we have to replace the heat and air, or whether it's the roof, I mean, it's not $20,000. I mean, we're looking at 200, 400 highs in some cases. So it just makes good sense. We have put off putting money in this kind of a fund for almost 24 months now. So we still can tweak and do things during the budget process, but the time, I think, is just like we were talking about, is to put the money there, and everybody up here has a chance to vote. When we get ready to pull money out of it, word goes.
Yes.
I mean, it's not, the money is not going to be a slush fund for the county manager or the chief financial officer.
All expenditures would be brought back to this board for a vote, for what's spent. And that money will stay there in perpetuity until even I'm long gone, sitting gone in the ground, if it's not spent, it'll remain there for capital needs.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Okay, one more.
Yeah, the chairman just made my argument, and that is, this capital, this so-called capital improvements list is nothing more than every capital improvements list that I've seen since I've been a commissioner. It's a want list. If you take the school board's capital improvement list, it goes on for like 10 pages, and it's a wish list. The projects have to be justified before they can, before we spend the money. It's not just a matter of peeling them off and spending the money because it appeared on a capital want list. So the chairman is right. We don't, we probably don't need this money. So why are we doing, holding this money? And I take exception to what the finance officer said, that this money will stay there in perpetuity. There's no law that says it stays there for perpetuity.
Yes, it is.
We can roll this money back anytime the commissioners want to.
Actually, you can't. Once it is put in a capital reserve, it has to be spent for capital, and it stays there until you vote-
You're making my argument even more. This is a way of burying whatever tax decrease the citizens of Beaufort County may get this year that they deserved. It's a way of stopping the budget process and controlling the budget process. And these commissioners up here need to think about this because you are overtaxing these people. There are hard-working people out there that are paying this tax. Some of them are not, but a lot of them are. And I'm for the family with three children that's working for a living and having to pay taxes. They need to get a tax refund. They need to get their taxes lowered this year. That's what this is about.
Okay, any? All right, all those in favor of putting the 5.6, 5,624,285 into the capital reserve fund, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we get through all of yours, Anita?
Yes, I believe the county attorney is going to handle the one about prayer, and then we have Bryant Buck here from Nittany to do the one on the Chacoinity Cama land use plan.
All right. David, you want to turn your mic on? Is that one still broke?
Yeah. I'm not sure from the commissioners what their feeling is about this matter of prayers and that sort of thing. And all I can tell you is that the Fourth Circuit, which is our circuit, this is not a Supreme Court holding, but it's a holding in our circuit, which the Supreme Court took a pass on. That's kind of where we find ourselves. And they left the door cracked a bit to get back into it, this is David talking, hear you a bit, for the Supreme Court to get back into that business with more detail, perhaps. I think it was Brian put forth the idea of certain things being done, being considered, similar to, if not exactly like Forsyth County, which is the Winston-Salem area, as a solution to the situation. And they recite in their paperwork that there were four things, made a number of key findings. This is the Fourth Circuit. And those key findings were, this was in the case, Simpson case versus Chesterfield County Board of Supervisors, which interestingly enough is where I'm from, Chesterfield County, Virginia, which is really beside the point, I just bring that up. Whereas the First Circuit made a number of key findings about the prayer policy ruled constitutional in Simpson. And this is what these four things were. They allowed for invocations for the benefit of the legislative body itself, rather than for the individual leading the invocation, or for those who might also be present. Secondly, established a practice of compiling a list of local monotheistic congregations with addresses taken primarily from the fund bill, and where to the county clerk would send an invitation each December addressed to religious leader of each congregation. Two, required the, three, required the county clerk to schedule respondents to the invocation, to give the invocation on a first come, first served basis. So, well, you see what it does. And four, made plain that the county board was not affiliated with any one specific faith by opening its doors to a wide pool of clergy. Also added to that is the so-called moment of silence. So it's not that the court, my interpretation of all of this, it's not that the Fourth Circuit said, we can't have prayer. You can have prayer. It's a question of who's going to deliver the prayer. And the idea of the list of ministers, we had one tonight, it's a beautiful prayer, I thought. But that's one way that you could accomplish what the court is trying to tell us here. And the other thing is the moment of so-called silent prayer as a possibility, where each person could deliver their own to God, their own idea of the prayer. So you see, there's a way of going here, that you continue with the prayer, and you stay within the bounds of what the Fourth Circuit has said. So I just brought that up to your attention. So that's a possibility.
Jerry wants to go first.
Certainly.
Okay, well, first of all, what we did tonight, I don't really have a problem with that. I mean, it's good. I mean, because God is not a respecter of persons. Anybody who wants to pray in sincere, he will certainly hear and honor their prayer. But my biggest concern is, these people who sent us this email, they're in Washington, DC, and they're in Ohio. And the other thing is, we have public comments every meeting. Anybody who has a problem with a commissioner's praying, they should have stepped right there to that podium and said, I just think it's wrong to throw rocks and then hide your hand. They should be man or woman enough to come here and say, I don't appreciate you praying. But we can continue to pray. That's one of the things that God has given everybody, free will. We can accept Him or reject Him. So anything that we choose not to do, we cannot do, and anything that we want to do, we can do. And so it just bothers me that people who have absolutely and positively nothing to do with Beaufort County is now trying to tell us how we should conduct ourselves, and that bothers me. All right.
All right, I read the, uh, I read the letter three times. And they were criticizing me as chairman because of the fact that I asked everyone to stand and the person delivering it was either, well, every time in the last eight years, has been an elected official. That's what I was getting at of it, is that elected officials were always saying the prayer and we were asking everybody to stand when that might have made somebody feel a little bit uncomfortable. I'm not one for the silent prayer. I'm one for inviting different religious leaders in the county. And when I say leaders, you know, it could be an elder, whatever different denominations call it, or a minister. And we've got a lot of good people in Beaufort County. So I don't think it'd be any trouble filling that by inviting somebody in, uh, for each one of our meetings.
Yeah, um, I, I'm gonna, um, repeat what we've heard tonight already. Uh, First Amendment says Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. That's all, that's all it says. That deals with religion right there. Now, we're not establishing any law or ordinance as to what religion we will endorse or enforce through prayer. I can see how, in a very misconstrued way, someone may say, "Well, because you act in such a way, you're establishing a, a pattern, therefore it may be an ordinance," which is not true. However, to get around that, I understand bringing in other people. I don't think we should spend too much time on it. I think we should, i- i- it should be one of these things that is done with as little time spent as possible. You're gonna have to open up your, the ranks here to people that are, are not Protestants, who are not Catholics, who are not Christians. But they're spiritual people and they should have the right as well to pray. I can endorse that with my vote. I will not endorse a, a moment of silence. I, I, that is not Christian. And although I was raised, uh, when you pray, you pray aloud. And you pray in a group if at all possible. And that's the way I see that in particular. So, I, I think what has happened over the years, there's been a misunderstanding of the Constitution, a misunderstanding of the so-called separation of church and state. And so therefore, that has like a snowball, rolled down a hill, metastasized to a point that some of these leftist lawyers think they have a foothold to change the way we, we organize our communities and govern those communities. And this is the, this is a slippery slope for us, not for them. All they have to do is attack us and stay after us. And, and if we cower, we fail as leaders. So we need to do whatever it takes to do as little as possible to make these people happy, but, but do whatever it takes to respect the First Amendment. Again, Congress shall make no law respecting establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. And I take that, we let everybody have their say. And we, the only thing I would suggest we do is we give a certain time limit to those folks and spend no more than 10 minutes of our meeting on the prayer portion. It will never take that much. If it does, if it does, it does. But again, no more than two minutes. The prayer today was, today was what, two minutes, maybe? Two minutes is enough. And no more than 10 for everybody. And I'm done.
Here again, the letter that we received, I, I read it three times. It did not say that they were asking us not to have prayer. And that's it in a nutshell. I mean, a lot of people have tried to read into it more than what's there. Uh, I got an email, didn't recognize the name. I said, "Do you live in Beaufort County, North Carolina, or Ohio?" She did have underneath her name, "Ohioan." Did I pronounce that right? And she came right back and said she lived in Ohio. So, you know, I think what we did tonight is the right thing to do. That's just my opinion, so.
I, I liked how we did it tonight. Um, it's not on the agenda, but I would like to see that prayer streamed on the video.
It was.
And I would like to see that continue.
It, it started at 5:30, the streaming and the recording.
Right. And not taking away anything with Reverend Commissioner Langley, but this is a wonderful prayer tonight. And I think we're going to get some really good prayers. And I think the tide will turn that we will get super prayers instead of nothing. I think this will be a good thing. But it needs to be on TV.
I don't know if Jerry was nothing, but. Yeah, this lady from Ohio was interesting. I, I mean, I did respond to her.
Here's where I think we are, David. Um, I mean, I would like to see, based on the conversation we've had tonight, for you to have a one-page policy that's very brief, uh, just so that if Katie gets an inquiry, she can attach it and send it to them, of how we're handling prayer in our meetings.
Will be opened up to all spiritual groups, whether it's Christian or not?
Yeah, and, and we'll let you, we'll let you have two months to invite.
Actually, I don't know that you need to invite atheists, because that's not a prayer.
Look, I want to proffer to the board, uh, I, I don't disagree with what anybody has said in here, but I'd like to proffer to the board that we do nothing. If we start putting stuff into writing, we're, we're taking risk and, and crafting something like that can be a problem. I just think that we do, that we, we've changed our, the way we do things, and I don't think that we need to justify it to anybody. And, uh, if anybody wants to show up and see what we do, they can. But you start sending out a policy and you start writing and, you know, there's, there's a lot of risk in that to us.
Yes.
I agree with, uh, what you and other commissioners said, except for Hood. And I think Hood is basically right. But, uh, the thing about it is, is you gotta respect. I mean, just like people say that, I mean, I didn't have a problem with what we was doing, but somebody had a problem with the way we was doing it. But I will never sit here and say that we need to stop having prayer. Because if this lady from Ohio will come to some of our meetings, she stand up there and pray herself. And I really think we need, need to always have a prayer, whether it's, and like I said, whoever it is, whether they're Muslim, Christian, Protestant, I don't care who they are. If they want to come and pray, then we invite them to pray and stab their court system. Because these people from Ohio, they, they, their lawyers get paid whether they, whether they go to court or not. And we had to spend thousands and thousands of dollars trying to fight something that we believe in, which is possible we still may go to court, because she ain't gonna quit. I know she ain't gonna quit.
Let me suggest that we go ahead and not adopt a, a policy unless it's warranted by incidents that happen.
You backed down in form of a motion.
Yeah, well.
No, if you want to do that.
No. I, I, I would agree with that, that we just do nothing.
We just, we just continue on the same way we've done tonight.
Okay, okay. And then, you know, if there's something happens down the road that we, that we need to have a policy.
By consensus, or, you know, and we can all agree that if anybody wants to come and speak and pray, up to a certain point, maybe we don't have a policy just for everybody anyway, just, just the amount of time, that's it. But they can say anything they want. They're not invited, but they're, they're welcome to come. But that's, that's what I'm talking about, prayer. I'm talking about prayer. I'm talking about.
I don't want to send you no 35-minute prayer.
Well, no, that's why there has to be a time limit. And, but, but I think to respect the First Amendment, we, we have to at least say here now that we all agree that we respect all religions and all religions have the right and access to our commissioners' court.
During, during the public comments, we have 30 minutes that's open for that.
Well, then they can pray if they wish. Yeah, okay, if you want to do it that way, I'm, I don't have a problem with that.
The less said, the better at this point, guys. You know, you need to cut it off. You're digging yourself a hole.
Uh, ladies, 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 this is, this is up here. All right? Katie?
So, just for my clarification, we're going to continue the way we did it this evening?
Yes.
It's pre-meeting. And if somebody would like to be that person, are they contacting y'all or me?
I, I would say contact you.
Okay.
And I would also encourage any of the commissioners, if they know someone, that they get coordinated with you.
Okay.
Okay?
In the event we have nobody to pray, what do we do?
Yeah, with, I mean, I, I see two people out here tonight that, that could do it. Three, three. Okay, uh, we're down to the draft update to the Chaco Innity portion of the Beaufort County Joint Cama Land Use Plan. Brian, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Nice to see each of you this evening. Uh, and I'm taking this item on behalf of, um, Manager Alagud this evening, uh, who's a little under the weather. Uh, I think we need to keep him in our prayers. Okay, um, the item is the draft update to the Chaco Innity portion of the Beaufort County Joint Cama Land Use Plan. Uh, the Mideast worked with the Town of Chaco Innity to update their portion of the Beaufort County Cama Land Use Plan. The town requested this update to bring them into compliance with General Statute 160D that you all have heard about. There were no major changes, uh, or no changes at all to the main documents section or to anything in county jurisdiction. This document is attached. I'm sure everyone's had an opportunity to review it. A summary of the updates, basically, we updated demographic and economic data for the town. We updated existing land use analysis for the Town of Chaco Innity. We also added existing land use maps for Chaco Innity jurisdiction only. Uh, those three maps were included in the inset. Uh, in part two, we updated the goals, objectives, and policies for the town. Uh, and then in another part, uh, Chaco Innity specific, we added future land use category definitions for Chaco Innity, and also added future land use map for Chaco Innity's jurisdiction only. Uh, there is no public hearing this evening required because the town already advertised and held one. Uh, the updated plan was unanimously adopted by the Town of Chaco Innity Board of Commissioners at their January 3rd, 2023 meeting. Um, so basically, we're coming to this group for approval, uh, of the update to the Chaco Innity portion of the Joint Cama Land Use Plan. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. I'm sorry? Uh, we need approval for this board to move forward with that draft plan.
Is that just in, so it's included in the county plan?
That's correct. And as you're aware, uh, last year, we went through, uh, or actually, I guess it was two years ago, uh, we did the same type amendment for the Town of Belhaven, uh, to loosen some of their restrictions, which some of you recall. Um, the joint land use plan includes, it's Beaufort County, but it includes a small section for each of the municipalities within the county, um, you know, which basically is, is specific to their unique jurisdiction.
Got a motion, it's for a second and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, uh, does this plan apply to the ETJ for the Town of Chaco Innity?
This does apply to the ETJ.
It applies to the ETJ. All right, a couple of things that are in the Beaufort plan that I take exception to that we don't have to address tonight, but I want to make you aware of it. The, the county and municipalities, through their design review process, will encourage the use of green infrastructure. I have a problem with that. You know, if we update the counties, we need to get that junk out of there. That's a political statement. It doesn't need to be made. And then it goes on to say the county will, um, encourage and implement more effective state-administered stormwater management rules. Are we gonna get into something in stormwater management rules that's in this county part of this plan that is, that is hurting us really bad in this county and is gonna hurt us a lot worse? That doesn't need to be in there. That's a political statement. And we need to, when we review this thing again, I can assure you, I'm gonna be going over it with a sharp pencil on these political statements. The one question that I have on the map, since you got the maps in here, I have a little bit of trouble understanding them on the scale that we're on, but, uh, the, our industrial park that belongs to the county, is that, is that put in the plan? I know they don't like you to say zoning, but that's what it is. Uh, is that within the plan, the land use of that, so that we are not going to encumber any future development that may happen in our industrial park, which we have on the south side of the river?
That is recognized as industrial and remains industrial in the plan.
Okay. You good?
As far as I know, I am, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the plan, Cama Plan, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm available at any time to discuss any of these items.
Thanks. Okay, we're down to, uh, fire and EMS awards banquet. John?
As most of you know, annually, the emergency management and the fire districts in this county get together to have an awards banquet and recognize the individual participants in it. They are doing that on their own dime. They don't have any portion of funding other than that. And if that, yeah, my thought was that we ought to support all of those first responders who are, uh, who are out there risking their lives to, to support the people of Beaufort County by simply giving them funding to create the plaques that they hand out, they in turn hand out to the people they want to recognize. So my motion was to, to provide $500, uh, to award the winners of the Beaufort County firefighters, fire officers, and EMS and telecommunications of the year.
And a second. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you. You want to get to your next item, John?
Sure. The next item is, you, you, we all approved, uh, some time ago, two months ago, actually, establishing a workforce housing task force. This is the charter for that workforce housing task force, uh, that's included. And I was seeking your approval of the charter. Interestingly enough, as part of this, we, we, I tapped into the Chamber of Commerce and asked if they could survey their members, which are all business people in Beaufort County, business owners, most of them, uh, and determine what their membership thought about housing and the housing availability for, specifically for their employees. And I'd like to highlight some of that. Eighty-five percent of the respondents, there was almost 100 of them, uh, responded and said that housing was either barely or not available for their employees. Seventy-seven percent said the lack of housing plays a role in the recruitment and retention of employees. And 91% said they feel that there is a lack of housing for their youngest employees. So I think that's just highlights the reason that we need to see what's behind all this and how can we encourage industry to solve this problem. And that's, that's the gist of this. And you can read through the rest of it. On the back, second page is members. Uh, I'm suggesting that we have a 14-member committee or task force that would not prohibit anybody else from attending any of the meetings that wanted to be involved. But, you know, 14 members, Dan, maybe you'd like to be the other commissioner because you're in the real estate business. So, um.
Yeah.
Anyways. No, no, I'm just offering that up. Anyways, I'd like a motion to accept the, the task force charter. Who have any questions? Sure.
Question, I see here it's got 14 members. Uh, why wouldn't you use 13 or 15 in case you have a vote or something? I mean, it could lead to this, be deadlocked or something like that.
Good suggestion. We can go to 15.
Other, other questions, comments?
I, I have comments.
Okay.
I'm real reluctant to get into this housing thing. The federal government has got billions and billions and trillions of dollars in HUD and in housing and all of this. The forces that, that run the market in Beaufort County are well beyond any commissioner's control or anything that any commissioner can do. And it's like a lot of these. And it's like a lot of these study committees, commissions and committees, they take a project and all of a sudden they're way over here in left field doing a housing project, trying to do a housing project at public expense or something. I'm afraid of this thing getting off and going wild, and I just wonder if there's been any study at all on the number of housing lots for, to build houses on that are coming on stream within the next six or eight months in Beaufort County. Does any, do you have any idea?
No, that's part of, that'd be part of the, the whole thing would be to study what is, where the need is and what the availability is that's in that area. It could be just, it could be just rehabbing existing housings that's out there. In answer to your question, I think you might need to look at the definition of workforce housing for this task force. Because it's defined as housing, and that's apartments, condominiums, townhomes, and single family, that a new employee can afford on their income. Their income may be single or dual wage. It's housing that's affordable for them in their location where their work is. The biggest, we, I attended a event that was done by the Thirdbanks Home Builders Association here, and, and this was, this idea of this lack of housing was discussed in some detail. The builders, the contractors, the developers don't even understand that there's this lack of housing exists in this town, community, okay? They don't even understand it. They're coming up and saying, wow, I'm going to go back and talk to my, my company about this. And it was also a discussion about mainly apartments, apartment complexes that are available that for people to, especially teachers and, we were talking earlier about nurses, but new nurses and stuff like that they can get into.
Well, I'm kind of in the business, so what I can tell you is this. Most of the lack of apartments being built, if apartments are the problem, or housing, is because of restrictive ordinances and the, the resistance of the governing bodies of the incorporated municipalities in the county. Because they provide the, the infrastructure that's necessary to have these kinds of developments. The city of Washington, while they, they proffer that they're for this, they have, they have low to moderate income housing and they're financing it. Guess what low to moderate income housing is? It's $170,000 a unit. That's the city's idea of what this is. And I can answer the question that I just asked you. I personally know of about 250 new lots that will be developed with water and sewer within the next year around Beaufort County and Washington. So I, I'm going to vote against this because I think it's another useless function of government that we're out charging windmills, and you're not going to win when you start charging windmills. So.
What is that, charging windmills?
We need, you need to read the book. We'll start, we will start, we, I don't want to see us get off into left field with this whole project because the, the development for the housing is already coming about. If you want to, if you want to do something, you need to go to municipalities and get them to change zoning and provide overlay districts so that you can do apartments at, at reasonable prices. And, and the other thing that happens, that has happened with this particular subject when it has come about and you've gotten into it, is you wind up with low income and Section 8 housing. Guess what you get when you get low income and Section 8 housing? You get people that are not working to begin with.
Specifically.
So you're only making the problem a lot worse.
Specifically, we're looking for housing for people that are working, not, not Section 8. And that's, that is totally outside the parameters of this group.
Well, the mortgage process, some people that are working to get housing is they either rent apartments, which if you want to encourage apartments, I just told you how to do that. And if you want to sell low income housing, these people qualify by making an application for a mortgage and, and proceeding with that. There's been some other schemes that have come about in Beaufort County since I've been a commissioner that involve getting people to start savings accounts so they can have a down payment and so that they could show lenders that they were liable. Those failed miserably.
Okay, Randy, you got a problem that's, that's unsolvable?
If I don't qualify as one of the two commissioners, would I qualify as one of the three interested people?
Yes. Yes, all right. Did we have, is there a motion? You got a motion?
I have a second.
Okay, and we got a second. Yeah. John, I'm asking one question, it's not a rhetorical question. How can you make this work without it costing any county money whatsoever?
I can't probably answer that. The intent is to find a way to make that happen. I don't think we're going to go down the road, the rabbit hole of using county money or asking for county money. You'd have to approve that even if we, even if we did. But based on the, based on the interaction that we had at the home builders group, it's, it's almost a marketing deal. It could be, and, and I think we all know what Washington did with, with the apartment complex that was out on Highland Avenue or whatever, out there with Old Man, and how they turned that down. Yeah, we may be dealing with the city of Washington on this. That may be where you're going. I mean, developers are going to want water and sewer.
Well, let me, let me take this one step further then. I mean, the city of Washington has, they have their own government. It's an overlay government of the county, they deal with less services, but they like to get into housing, gives them a reason to exist, I guess. So my opinion is you let Washington do that. I think if we start setting up groups and the county is involved in any way in, in a sphere of influence, then we're going to be at least seen to play favorites with certain groups rather than others. Natural market forces will never fully come into effect, and the only way to solve this problem is natural market forces. Now, I have been harping for decades as a commissioner that we need to have more vocational education in our schools. Finally, they're starting to do it, but they've been reluctant to do that. In order to have a workforce that can go to work and, and wants to achieve and strive and learn a trade, that will help immeasurably. Now, we all know about Bidenflation, too much money chasing too few goods all at one time, and we've seen materials higher than they've ever been before. Now, they're coming down now, but they've been high. Labor has not come down, but now we're kind of in a, in a little bit of a recession. Interest rates are up to try to keep us from having a, a terrible economy without a, a soft landing. We're probably still going to have an even worse recession than we got right now. I hate to be negative, but those are natural market forces. Once things kick in, you're going to see people be, going to work cheaper and materials be cheaper, and you're going to see housing go down irrespective of the interest rates being at a higher level with the Federal Reserve boosting their, their base rate to slow down development. So I think if, if we start getting involved and saying, we'll make things right, we'll, we'll do our best to make it happen, we're only going to cause more problems than we will ever be able to solve.
I don't see where it would hurt to have some notables on this committee, and if this city or another entity starts going off the left field, we'll be able to call them and you say, what's going on here? They may have a good answer, they may not. But I think, I think this is a good thing. And if it doesn't cost anything, just time, what difference does it make?
Okay, gentlemen, we're done, we're done for a vote. We've got a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the charter, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. I, we're down to, you, you want to start with the Town of Bath Sewer?
Well, it's not up to me to give that report. Does the manager have anything on the Town of Bath Sewer to report?
No, not to my knowledge.
Well, what I would like to ask, since he can't be here and I understand that he's not well, but what I'd like for him to do is to send an email to all the commissioners with his, what his report would have been on the Town of Bath Sewer. And for those of you that don't know what the, what the issue with the Town of Bath Sewer situation is, it appears as though the Town of Bath is getting a large grant and they're going to build a pressure line coming to Washington, and they're going to build it too small to have additions to the line between here and Bath. They're going to build it only to serve the Town of Bath. And they have to cross the Beaufort County Water and Sewer District in order to do that, so they're going to need our approval at some point in here. And what we asked the manager to do was to find out what was going on with that and how much money was available and the sizing of the line, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I thought that things were going to be happening in a matter of months, so we don't have much time on this. So if he would send a report to the commissioners about what he has found out about this would be very helpful insofar as the commissioners deciding what we want to do or where we need to get additional funding. Representative Kidwell got the funding for that. I hope he got enough funding to have a real sewer system instead of a private system for the Town of Bath.
Okay. You want to talk about stormwater rules?
Well, the manager was supposed to be here for this, and I understand that Mr. Buck is going to answer questions about this. This is something, you talk about housing and you talk about regulations and you talk about keeping the price of housing down. This is called, this is different from the stormwater rules. Don't let stormwater rules confuse you. It's a big political game is all that it is. This is called nutrient stormwater rules. It concerns nitrogen and phosphorus. Everybody thought you went out to Lowe's or to the fertilizer plant to get that, but this is a, this is a, a game that's being played on a very sophisticated level. And what it is, there has been a nitrogen and phosphorus or a nutrient stormwater rule in existence in Beaufort County, in Beaufort County and in the town, city of Washington and maybe Bellhaven, I don't know about Bellhaven, but it's other places that are designated by statute for several years. What, and I will ask Mr. Buck to correct me because it's his agency that's been holding this, so please step in at any time and correct what I'm saying. But several years ago, without the knowledge of the commissioners, this is something else I'm concerned about, that this stuff that goes on without the knowledge of commissioners when our public officials who are supposedly running things don't notify us properly, it makes big problems. Well, the legislature in its infinite wisdom has approved the rework of the nitrogen and phosphorus stormwater rules. It's going to raise the cost, in my estimation, of a buildable lot in a subdivision in the area, in the entire county by as much as $2,000 or $3,000. And what it comes down to, if you want to have a very dense development, you have to literally buy nitrogen and phosphorus equivalents from the state of North Carolina. And those are expensive. I have a piece of paper in here, it's like $170 a pound for phosphorus, and it's like $12 or $15 a pound for nitrogen. You say, well, that doesn't sound like much. But when you have to buy eight pounds of phosphorus at $170 a pound over 10 acres, times 30 years, you're getting into some real money. My credentials in having this discussion are that I have done several of these projects and I have bought nitrogen and phosphorus for the state for my clients. So I know what I'm talking about with this. This came up, I discovered this when the city of Washington invited people to come to a hearing with the city of Washington so they could discuss the new stormwater rules. And I thought, well, I'm going down there and they're going to tell you, you got to file a different paper and, you know, some, it's not going to amount to hella beans. Well, when I got there, what I found out was they had increased the area that you can have on a lot, it's 24% now, they had decreased it by 8%. They decreased it to 22%. This is a big deal because if you take a small lot in a subdivision and you're trying to jam a house and a driveway, everything that's impervious counts against you, and a storage building on that lot, you're not, you're going to have to go buy out nitrogen and phosphorus in order to have a viable subdivision. And that means paying the state as much as $1,500, $2,000 a lot in order to make this work. Now, John, you're talking about housing and why housing costs so much. This is what you should be working on, is overregulation of, a regulation of the industry. And I am very concerned that this happened without the commissioners even knowing about it. I had to go to a city meeting to even find out about this. This becomes law on like May the 1st of this year, within two or three months. And it's going to be put in front of you as commissioners and told, well, you don't have any choice but to vote for this. That's not the way the world works. The reason you don't have any choice but to vote for this is because you weren't notified two or three years ago when they started this process, when we could have weighed into it and had a voice and got something done. And I wanted to remind those of you that are new on this board, that was about eight or 10 years ago, Beaufort County got the stormwater rules changed in North Carolina. Because I was the lead commissioner. We went to Raleigh, we sat in the big room with the big people, and we listened to Deener, DEQ, you heard Cliff Williams say that we're having DEQ problems down in Aurora with development, sat in the big room and everything that came up, it was the same story. Well, we need to refer this to our attorneys so that they can come back and tell us what to do. All they were doing was trying to block us and stymie us. It didn't work. Because every time they went into that, I got up and cited the rules because I do the work. And everybody said we would not be successful, but the legislature saw it our way and they changed the law. Now, we have officials that we pay, the county pays to look after this for us. They're supposed to be in here reporting this to us, that there's an issue out there that can affect development in Beaufort County, but instead we're forming a committee to study the situation. We need people who are doing their job and are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Now, my understanding at this point is that, that, that through your, and I'm not blaming you because it's up to our officials that we hire to look after us, but that your group has reviewed these plans, you've been through the plans, and that you are ready to bring that to us for us to approve.
Not at this point, Commissioner Richards. Where it's at, we, and I'll give you a chronology, kind of a timeline, just a, a, a glance timeline of, of how this kind of materialized. In early 2021, we were informed of the statute change. That statute was changed April of 20, okay? 2020, all right? So early 21, we were informed of the statute change. They came around with a series of webinars held for communities on updating their ordinances and local programs. In mid-2021, a model ordinance and local program was released by the state. And then in late 2021, we basically, understanding the delicate nature of this issue, we followed the minimum state requirements. And I remember Commissioner Richardson, myself, we were all involved in the, the stormwater, you know, back in late, I guess it was 2009 or so. But anyway, we discussed with DEQ and the county manager. Our recommendation was for the state to approve the documents first and then the board adoption. All right? In case there are any changes requested by the state, it wouldn't have to go back to the board multiple times. The county manager signed off, the draft ordinance and local program was submitted to the North Carolina DEQ, marked draft, not adopted by the Board of Commissioners. In mid-2022, DEQ responded back with their comments, okay? Again, we followed the minimum state requirements. In July of 2022, we prepared the requested revisions. County manager signed, submitted to NCDQ, marked draft, again, not adopted by the Board of Commissioners. It was also discussed with county, with the county manager that required education parts of the local program needed to be implemented, okay? Discussed at length. We recommended that the county contract with the Clean Water Education Partnership, as they can meet the requirements most efficiently. So we tried to work through the, the details of meeting the requirements of the updated, mandated stormwater ordinance. In late 2022, okay, we still not heard back from DEQ. We emailed the contact at DEQ, haven't heard back. So we basically contacted on the status of the agreement, we talked to the county manager, and decided that, that educational component would wait until the model ordinance and the local program went to the board and we could handle it all at once. We bring it all back to this board instead of piecemealing it back and forth. You got the entire picture. So currently, we emailed our contact at DEQ for status on update a few weeks ago, still haven't heard back from DEQ, and we're continuing to follow up with phone calls. My understanding is that- My understanding is that there is a, a log, a backlog of many of these items going through. And I guess it was mid-last year, the commission met and basically put the brakes on certain items of the stormwater. So this backlog has kind of kept backing up because these haven't been adopted or pushed back through to their local jurisdictions for adoption. So right now, I'm not sure the status. The goal was to bring the county into compliance with the stormwater general statute changes that were enacted in 2020. That's our goal.
Well, yeah, thank you for that. That, that is very comprehensive. This is a very damning ordinance. The additional work, you're only going to be successful with this ordinance. If you're Mr. Property Owner, you are not going to be able to get this permit. You have to come to somebody like me who's an engineer, who understands this stuff and does it. Because you have to get online, you have to use a certain computer program, you have to know how to apply the various things in order to get the permit. And how to use the regulations to your client's best advantage. So it's probably going to cost an extra $1,000 a lot for me. That's high, yeah, it's going to cost that much because you've got to do a lot of things. And then you're probably going to have to pay if you do a, a normal subdivision, another couple of thousand dollars a lot. My Hood's estimate is $3,000 increase for every lot in Beaufort County. And you want to, you want to hold this down, but you're going to, you're going to sit here and vote for this stuff. So I make money on this, but I'm against it. It does not serve a real purpose. Now, who is in this? There are several different stormwater rules, so don't, don't get carried away with stormwater. Stormwater is not floodwater. Stormwater is the treatment of water on the surface. We build these mud holes that you see around that the water flows through and, and supposedly cleans it up. There are several different kinds of stormwater. In addition to doing nutrient stormwater, the developer is also going to have to do normal state, what's called state stormwater. You've got both of these to jump through in order to get where you want to go. So we're, we're running the cost up every day. From reading of this proposed ordinance that I have of the draft of this thing, it looks to me like we're not going to accomplish this without additional staff. Whether we hire you guys at Mideast to do this or whether we do it ourselves or whether we set a standard that we're going to accept the engineer's seal and which can, you can do. That's called the strict liability method, which I advocate, rather than hiring a staff to sit down and review these things and call me with these inane questions that don't amount to a hill of beans about changing plans and all that sort of stuff. So I don't have a problem with strict liability on this and the county accepting it, but if you don't accept it that way it's presented, then you're going to have to hire your own engineer to do this. The second way is to hire someone who has some technical ability to run a checklist on this. And you're probably going to run the checklist anyway, but it can get, those that I have done in the past that involve Beaufort County, we have this law in Beaufort County right now, the county has had to go out and hire somebody to review the process in order to see if what I did was correct. Now, the county up until now, we have tiptoed in enforcing this. I have not made an issue of it. Because if I had a client that was, that I thought was at risk, I would do the nutrient stormwater for them. But normally, if it's just a few lots or something, I've been letting it go and not making an issue out of it. My understanding is one of the things that's happened and the reason that this has been done is the state is clapping down and that they're going to be imposing enforcement. Now, we've heard about these different stormwater plans. The nutrient stormwater plan for the Pamlico Tar River Basin, there's another one for the Neuse River Basin, okay? But the one for the Pamlico Tar River Basin by statute includes certain towns and it includes, for some reason, I think Beaufort County is the only county that's in it, it includes Beaufort County and these different towns. So you ask yourself, why is this? Well, there's a long story that I'm not going to bore you with about how we got to where we are. But there's a reason that we got to where we are. But my thought about this at this point in time, my recommendation to this board is that we go to our elected officials and ask for local bills to be entered to remove the county from this because we're the only county that's in it. The density of development in Beaufort County is certainly not like the density of development in any town or city. So that, you know, I can make that as a motion or I can have some more discussion, I'll be glad to answer questions about this. Going on and reading the rest of this ordinance, we have to do things like the education process that he was talking about. We have to set up somebody to go out and talk to people about stormwater. We have to do searches for what's called illegal drains, illegal this, illegal that. When you read this, it is a very involved thing. We have to set up a hotline, for instance. Think about that, the county's going to have a hotline for somebody to call in about somebody violating some stormwater ordinance. And the, the environmental rules are so complex that you're going to burden that hotline with everything from beavers right on up to this. So this is going to become a nightmare for the county before it's over with, and it's going to become very expensive before it's over with and before you get done with it.
So what do you think we ought to do?
I think we ought to send, I think we ought to send, I think we ought to pass a resolution and ask Representative Kidwell and our senator to enter local bills to exclude Beaufort County from this law.
Very good.
And, and let the cities and towns stay in it. It benefits the cities and towns, I said I wasn't going to bore you with this, but the whole purpose of this to begin with was to benefit the cities and towns. We don't need to get into the housing device because there are not many people that know those answers and will even understand it when they hear it. So, but we need to be out of this because this is, this is going to, this is going to hurt development in this county.
Okay, we got a motion, somebody want to make a second?
Okay. The motion is that we, we ask our senator and our House member to introduce local bills to exclude us from the nutrient stormwater rules, Beaufort County. And get ready for your telephone to start ringing when you do that. Because you're going to hear from Deener and you're going to hear from every long-haired environmentalist west, east of the Mississippi.
Okay. We got a second. Any further discussion? All those, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
I don't see that one here.
Okay, those opposed?
I don't see that one here. Oh, people show up.
You didn't?
I can see those two.
Six, one.
Who voted yes to me? You did. Okay, we're down to, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
We're, we're down to getting an update on the southern border. Commissioner Etheridge.
Yeah, just, well, whatever point I would like to make tonight, I think Captain Davenport made it quite well earlier tonight when he said that, and this is just one of the many issues we have with the wide open southern border for political sake. The number one thing he said is 200 to 300% more fentanyl in our area coming across, that he sees in the last year and a half. And it's probably on an ascending rate right now. That in itself is enough reason for us to protect our constituents, our citizens of this county. But at some point, raising objection with what is happening down there. I mean, now there's already talk about impeaching Mallorca's, that will happen, whether it is passed or not, I don't know. But I will tell you this, there are Democrat lawmakers from the, down on the border who are ready for action because they see the effects of what is going on and how it is destroying their communities, and I will argue it will eventually destroy ours. This country is not set up to take in everybody from all over the world. We will die as a republic if this is allowed to continue, and I think that is the wishes of some of the people that began this. And enforcement, this non-enforcement of a border, and let's face it, borders give us our sovereignty. We are not a sovereign nation without borders. That's just the way it works. So Captain Davenport made the perfect argument tonight that we've got 200 to 300% more poison in our community, which is going to be killing more and more people. That's just one of the issues. We can talk about child trafficking and other human trafficking, and, and let's face it, our administration, our executive is an accessory to the, to the crimes that are being committed at the border, which I will argue is the, the world's largest crime scene. And it will affect us, and it is affecting us now, but at a much higher rate in the future. So I'm just asking you right now, get your heart right and expect more commentary from individuals that are facing and seeing what's happening on our streets like Captain Davenport.
Okay, Katie or you or David going to read us into closed session?
A motion is needed to go into closed session under NCGS 143-31811A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to reserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and public body.
We have to give what the subject is. You can't just go into closed session without.
For the opioid settlement.
The opioid settlement, thank you. We're, we're going to go into back room if anybody would like to wait for us to come back. Need a motion to go into the closed session?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Okay, we're coming back in from closed session, need a motion to come out of closed session.
Some move.
Second? A second. All those in favor, raise your right hand, okay? We did have a discussion in the closed session and we need to have a motion to accept the recommended proposals by our outside attorney.
Some move.
Second? Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Got a commissioner comment?
Okay, go ahead. Okay, I'm going to be real brief with this. The county has been taken severe advantage of tonight by political tricksters who've taken your surplus money that should be given back to you as taxpayers and dumping it into one of their flush funds. Believe me, they have a way, they want to spend this money or they wouldn't be so enthusiastic about doing this. Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor, stand up.